You're watching Cable 2.
Excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the October 28th, 2025, excuse me, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education meeting. I'm Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you're able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is from Booker T. Washington. "Success is to be measured not so much by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles that he has overcome." We will now have a moment of silence in remembrance of a child nutritionist from Spies Elementary School. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our first order of the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to return back into closed after our open meeting is over? And remove the personnel report on the consent agenda and add it back in after we return to open for a vote?
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Next is our student performance. Please welcome these wonderful dance performers from Parkland, Reagan, and North. And Early College.
Greetings, everyone. Annette Benitez Perez was our original solo student performer for this evening. Annette attends Parkland High School and her teacher is Ms. Stacy Pelzinger. We are very delighted to present a quartet as Annette will be joined by Yasmin Rubio from North Forsyth High School, Perla Romero-Merice from Reagan High School, and Sofia Morales Hernandez from the Early College of Forsyth Tech. These students represent a larger dance troupe by the name of Las Estrellas Latinas, translated "The Latin Stars." Tonight's performance is a traditional Hispanic dance representing the state of Jalisco, Mexico, performed the song "La Madrugada," meaning "Daybreak or Dawn." Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Las Estrellas Latinas.
Todita la noche anduve rodeando tu cacalito a ver si te podía ver por alguna gugerito. Todita la noche anduve rodeando tu cacalito a ver si te podía ver por alguna gugerito.
Ay la la la, ay la 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 la.
Todita la noche anduve rodeando tu cacalito
Ay la la la, ay la 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 la.
A ver si te podía ver por alguna gugerito. Lucero de la mañana préstame tu claridad para seguirle los pasos ese joven que hoy se va. Lucero de la mañana préstame tu claridad para seguirle los pasos ese joven que hoy se va.
Ay la la la, ay la 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 la.
Lucero de la mañana préstame tu claridad
Ay la la la, ay la 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 la.
Para seguirle los pasos ese joven que hoy se va.
Ay, ay, ay.
And if there are any family members, please, when everybody else sits, please stand. Yeah, I did. I did. So any parents here, present, would you, we'd like to recognize you too, and you might be walking out the door. But we want to recognize you. That was wonderful. Next, please enjoy our Spotlight video.
We're kicking off our literacy vending machines.
I have had my eye on a book vending machine. They've been on my radar for a few years and I've been trying to figure out how to get one in our building.
We are just so excited to partner with Rural Hall Elementary School to make sure that this literacy initiative takes off.
It's just another way to get books that kids want to read into their hands and to make book joy accessible for our school.
Kids will sign up for the Smart Start of Forsyth County Reading Champions program. And as soon as they sign up, they get their first token. So that's very exciting. They get their first token, they get their first book. And these books are theirs to keep. So this is building their home libraries, right? So this is your book forever. And every time you read two books, you get a new token to add something else to your library.
Yes, because what's your book is going to come out?
Seeing the book vending machine and like the two little boys who got their books today, them going up and just the big eyes and they got to push the buttons. That's just one of the absolute best parts of my job.
Thank you guys for coming. This is really a big deal for us.
In school, a lot of the time, the pressure is to see growth in the technical side of reading. Do you know your vowel sounds? Can you blend this word together? And so a lot of students become discouraged very quickly because they feel like they can't read. When the kids enjoy reading, they want to do more of it. Offering them a chance to get a book out of a vending machine, that's just a completely different approach to reading within the school building. It's a huge need. Having the opportunity to get a book that they can keep and have on a bookshelf at home and share with siblings or share with extended family, that is just an incredible opportunity for our students.
Thank you. Next is our superintendent's update.
Good evening. We've got two things that I wanted to highlight this evening. First, a reminder that we do have our Magnet Schools Showcase this weekend at the Winston-Salem Fairground Education Building. It is the annual opportunity for our families and communities to understand the programming that's available in our schools, to seek out information about all of our school choice options that our families have and make the best choice for their child. So please make sure to participate. We also want to remind folks that as Veterans Day is coming up, on Saturday, November 8th, we have the Veterans Day Parade in our community. All of our marching band and JRT programs will be participating that day. And then Tuesday, November 11th is Veterans Day and the district is closed. Our board meeting is moved to November 10th that week. Those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. The protocols that we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings pursuant to the District Civility Policy 1170. The Board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as Board Chair, not anyone else in the audience. We cannot talk about sensitive, private, or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. When you come to the podium, please state your name and the agenda item you would like to speak on. Our first speaker is Sadie Montoya.
Hi, Board and Chairman Kaplan. Sadie Montoya, I'm here to speak on the custodial revamping. I am the mother of two children at Metallark Elementary. I'm on the PTA. I'm a nurse practitioner in the community. I've spoken to the school board a few times and I sent a certified letter after I was, my time was cut at the meeting with the RIF, with my suggestions and concerns. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear me tonight and I hope that you will seriously consider what I have to share. While many of you were not involved in the creating of the situation we are in, you are complicit in the way in which you are handling or attempting to handle a resolution. The anxiety, the financial stress that you're causing the staff, the inconsistency, changes and anxiety you're causing students, their parents, that's why I'm here tonight. I wouldn't much rather be here tonight speaking about standards-based grading or equity among schools or higher pay for school staff. But I'm here to ask you repeatedly now to employ compassion and common sense to resolve your budget issues. It took 10 years to get in this mess. It is unlikely that it will be resolved in a few weeks or a few months. From the outside looking in, there seems to be no clear path forward. Just cutting costs one random area at a time and hoping that eventually the debt will be magically resolved. With little to no regard for emotional, mental, and financial distress you're inflicting on everyone in our system. I would think that a well-thought-out, step-by-step plan that may take months to formulate and years to enact would be a responsible action. Some of my friends are considering moving out of the district, private schools, or even homeschooling due to the way that you're handling this. Please do not revamp or cut our custodial staff. Do not reconstruct or cut any of our staff. Take time to consider your actions to this point and find another way. The school, the staff, and their students, their families, they need a thoughtful and responsible plan to resolve this budget. Compassion, consideration, careful planning are the path forward. Please listen to your staff, your employees, your parents, your constituents, and choose the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Wallace?
Stephanie Wallace, went to Forsyth County, 26-year veteran. If success is measured by overcoming obstacles, we are failing miserably. And we found out yesterday, I think it was, that now we have $97,000 more that we've got to figure out how to come up with to pay for this additional audit that the state is requiring. I'm asking you to please do what I asked you to do the first time. And much like the speaker before me said, you're ignoring what we're asking. Please do not jump to rash decisions on how to figure out how we're going to pay that $97,000. I know the community is rallying. They are doing fundraising. They're doing all sorts of things. That's not going to cover $97,000 and we all know it. And God only knows what this audit is going to ask for. Why do you think they keep ordering audits? Because nobody believes that no one has done anything that isn't traceable. We're saying, oh, we just overspent. Oh, we just didn't do this. We didn't recalculate our ADM. If we didn't recalculate our ADM before, Lord have mercy, help us now because our kids are bailing out of here in droves. They want to come see what magnet fair they're suited for? They want to see where they can go outside of Winston-Sophomore County Schools. You can't log into any social media without seeing people saying, oh, I'm pulling my kid and putting him in this, that, and the third online academy, here, that, the other. And that is creating even more generations of hurt. Because what a lot of those parents don't know is that some of these online schools that they're choosing, they're not accredited. I have tutored kids from private schools that weren't accredited because they could not get into college without anything to compare them to their state-tested peers. But parents are so angry and so hurt by what's being done to their students and the teachers and the staffs and community that they're, they just want out. And so if we think that lowering our student numbers is what got us into this mess and not readjusting, our numbers are getting ready to drop even more drastically. We have got to do exactly what she said. Slow down. I said that last time. We didn't get in this mess. You can't turn the Titanic on a dime. Winston-Sophomore County Schools is huge. We cannot fix this problem in a few decisions in a few weeks. It cannot be done. And you know what I'm going to say? Shame on you if you try. Shame on you if you try. It took forever to get here. We've got to allot the problem, the due process and thought that it deserves, that our students deserve, that our staff deserve. And cutting people, don't tell me we're not cutting student fa, I'm so tired of hearing that. Anybody that is in front of a classroom or supports someone in front of a classroom is student-facing. The custodians are student-facing. The assistant principals, student-facing. MTSS, all of them, they're student-facing. Get it right.
Mr. Snipes?
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. I graduated from Appalachian State Teachers' College, 1962, only 63 years ago. So I know a little bit about teachers. Didn't teach, but I know about teachers. Wanted to speak in regard to the overall budget deal and to the custodian, what they're facing. I understand they want to exchange a write-off of $4 million with this company that does custodial work in exchange for the custodial workers going to work for them. I've read about this, studied on the internet and on the legal side of it. And from what I understand, the Board or nobody else has the right to do this because they have not been given this right by the custodial workers. I understand this is a constitutional right that they have a choice and so far they've not had a choice. I understand the Board is going to get a write-off of $4 million, but I see no guarantees of what the custodial workers would be getting. I know there's some choices with the, within the Board and within the budget to have some people retained. I'd like for them all to be retained, but to me, the greatest consideration should be given to those workers that have the greatest time in tenure. I tried to, I've been right upset over this, of what's happening. Many years ago, I worked for a company that was, fiduciary trust was a big thing. I ran a bank and we had a large fiduciary trust, so I'm responsible for that. My definition of that is responsible legal trust. I read Article 31 as it applies to the School Budget and Fiscal Control Act. It applies to schools and the people that administrate the schools. I didn't see any statute or any protocol that was set out that both the superintendent and the finance officer did not violate. I have not heard the first comment or any movement toward anybody being responsible or liable for this. It did say that they were supposed to carry a liable bond or identity bond in the case they did something wrong. Obviously, the bond was probably $50,000, not 46 million. I don't understand how anybody, I don't understand where the money went. We hear 46 million, we also hear 35 million. That's a lot of money that didn't leave any footprints. I would appreciate the Board sharing this information with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Emanekian?
Ms. Emanekian, budget decisions have changed our atmospheres in our schools. Nothing happens by accident in the school board governance. If it happened, it was allowed. If it continues, it's endorsed. Strong boards don't drift by, they direct. A board's integrity is measured not only by the action it takes, but by the moment it chooses silence over service, comfort over courage. Teachers using their salaries to compensate shortages today when they're not paid what they're worth. Custodians told to be careful with the supplies that they now have. Cafeteria workers trying to stretch the food. But what about the Board buying up all this land without approval? Essential programs have been cut. There is no full day of teaching in some of the classes in the school that I work at because the teachers have to stop, remove kids for safety reasons, clean up a room that's been destroyed, and then try to bring that teacher back into a semblance of trying to teach her students. Let's hire a company for custodians that we couldn't afford before. Let's pay for another audit. It doesn't seem to be that people are owning up to the true lack of this fiasco. Our teachers deserve better. Our students deserve better. Some of our students that are special students are not getting the true education they deserve because they're placed in classroom sizes that are not conducive to their actual learning and placed with teachers that have not been trained to deal with how to de-escalate some of the situations. I wonder what the cost will be for our schools if they even survive these days that they're going through right now. The problems have been created, but decisions are still being made without consulting the ones that are in the trenches. I think it's time to clean out the untouchables. I feel that we are pawns being played by in a game of chess and we on the Board are losing. Nothing has changed. There seems to be fungus among us. There seems to be some disease that is happening that is not caring for the people in this school district. The toll is taking its toll, far more than the money that has ever been spent poorly because it's taken the tolls on the lives of young children. It's taking on the lives of teachers. It's taken on the lives of the parents, the community. I'm telling you, I'm a 66-year-old woman that has been embracing children for two weeks now and protecting the teachers. And right now, I'm OCD. I'm old, I'm cranky, and I'm disgusted.
Emily Harrison?
Good evening. I'm Emily Harrison. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed custodial contract and the district budget. I'm a proud mother of two EC students in this district and tonight, I'm angry, I'm heartbroken. I'm standing here, not just for my kids, but for every parent who can't be here to say what we're all feeling. Our children deserve better. For years, financial mismanagement has led us to this moment. This Board made massive cuts to the exceptional children's department. That cut that stripped away tools that worked. You ended the MAP Assessment Program. The Measure of Academic Process, for those who don't know, that program worked. It helped our children grow. It placed them in the right settings, pinpointed children's strengths. It worked on their customized goals. MAP made a difference and you took that tool away from students who needed it most. Now, these EC teachers have absorbed caseloads to follow state standards, which is a minimum, and then are classified as a Gen N resource teacher. The EC department took one of the biggest hits in staff reduction, supposedly to save 6.3 million. However, if these financial numbers that we see are true, the EC department was never over-budget. They were under. So I ask, why did you target our most vulnerable children? Again, because it looked good on paper? Because we were 3.5% over what the state would reimburse us for EC students? That's not fiscal responsibility. That's a moral failure. Our students are struggling. Our teachers are drowning. Our teachers care for our students, but caring doesn't pay for classroom aids or supplies or manageable caseloads. They have no budget for any resources for their classrooms, which is not just limited to EC. You're burning them out and it's only October. And now, custodial contract, a 10-year deal with SSC to outsource these jobs? 10 years? Loyal staff, people who have cared for our schools for decades will be gone. Some might be rehired by SSC, others won't. Some may not pass your algorithm that you're putting out there. And some will flat-out retire. You say this contract saves money because we already owe SSC millions. But how did we get into $4 million worth of debt with this company that we have previous issues with? Who approved these expenses? Where's the accountability? If this district overpaid them once, what's to say it won't happen again, causing more debt? We keep hearing about debt reduction, but that's not transparency. That's smoke and mirrors. Of course, debt is shrinking. You laid off teachers, furloughed staff, which is paying down our debt. Yet we haven't heard if the current interim superintendent, current school board, or soon-to-be interim superintendent will also be sharing some of these sacrifices because fairness should start at the top. Riffs to teachers happened on September 12th. Students lost teachers they loved. You didn't see those kids' faces. You did not hear those cries, but we did. Now we're looking at riff in custodial staff. What's next? You are running out of staff to cut. We are done with excuses. We want accountability. We want honesty. Our children are not numbers on a spreadsheet. They are people. They are potential. They are the future of this community and I promise you this, parents in this district will not be silent. We will continue to speak up until our children get the education they deserve.
Heather Morgan?
Good evening. My name is Heather Morgan. I teach first grade at Petrie Elementary School. I'm from a small town in the mountains of North Carolina. I attended community schools and my community taught me early on that when someone in your community is struggling or needs help, you show up. So tonight, I'm showing up to speak up for the custodians and our school community who are at risk of losing their benefits and their retirement. Those benefits not only benefit the stability of the custodians' families, they benefit the stability of our entire community. Because that will allow people to have a more stable financial future, which will benefit us here in Winston-Salem and through tax revenue, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. But I'm digressing because you see at my school and at every school, the custodial staff does much more than wax the floors and keep the bathrooms clean. That's just a small part of it. The custodians, at Petrie, our custodians know our students by name. They speak to those children every day. They know what's going on with those kids. And they're even there sometimes to lend a hand, pull somebody aside, have a quiet word with those kids. They're always ready to help. And as a teacher who's had to move her classroom two times in two years, you know that that makes a huge difference. That is invaluable. Our custodians have bought candy for our kids when they catch them being good. I even got my third dog from one of our custodians when it had puppies. It's the best dog I've ever had. But we must not forget the cleaning. And I must point out how much cleaner the school is since our custodial at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools came back under the Forsyth County Schools came back under the aegis of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. The difference is remarkable, and it wasn't just in my school, it was staggering. For the first time, somebody came in and cleaned my windows! I couldn't believe it! It was awesome! So, please, keep our custodians part of our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools community. Please, do not outsource their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Lawana Wade?
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, interim superintendent Catty Moore, and distinguished board members. My name is Lawana Wade, and I am here tonight to speak as an advocate for the students and staff of Paisley Magnet and Lowrance. As one of the district's historic Big Four, we take great pride in our longstanding tradition of excellence and the incredible work happening every day in our classrooms. Yet, we continue to face significant challenges that make it difficult to meet our goals and fully support our students. Now, with discussions of possible furloughs and cuts to supplements, it's understandable that many on the front lines feel discouraged and uncertain about the future of this very important work. Due to ongoing staffing shortages, Paisley continues to face challenges with classrooms that are frequently left understaffed. Our team is stretched thin, and many staff members are stepping in to cover classes and support students wherever needed. While we are doing our best to maintain consistency and instructional quality, the constant need for coverage makes it difficult to provide timely, meaningful professional development and planning time for our teachers. There are no solutions unless we focus on solving this staffing shortage problem at Paisley. Understand, these are not luxuries, these are necessities, and continuing on this path is simply not sustainable. So, looking ahead, we are deeply concerned about how school improvement targets, especially around growth, will be met with a strategic, without a strategic investment. Growth is possible, and we will achieve it, but it doesn't happen by accident. It takes strength, supported educators, aligned resources, and consistent leadership. So tonight, I ask for your support, not just in words, but in action. Let's prioritize staffing solutions at Paisley and Lowrance, not later, but right now. Let's ensure our schools have the resources they need to grow every student, regardless of their zip code. And let's work together to create the kind of school environment that fosters not just academic excellence, but long-term success. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim Scott?
Good evening, board members. My name is Timothy Scott Senior. I like my job. I'm representing North Forsyth High School, but I'm speaking for 217 custodial staff. 217, and of the 217, supposedly, you're keeping 35. What I'm asking today is that you widen it. Because when I look at the math, it looks like full-time people, 35. But when I went around and I interviewed the people who I work with in custodial, most of us are full-time. The number got smaller, the 35 looked smaller. So I'm thinking bigger. And I'm speaking for the part-timers. The part-timers, we can't do what we do, the full-timers can't do what we do and what we need to do. If those part-timers weren't there. And what I'm asking today is that you reconsider. At one point in time, I came from SSC, and I, what I noticed was, welcome to the family. Now, welcome to the family means something. It means connection, that you're part of this now. Now, you're letting go of some people. You're sending them somewhere else. They're no longer part of the family. They're not part of the family, and you gave them keys, and you just told them, just because you have keys, just because you have keys does not mean that you're part of this family. You're gonna come in and do what you do, but you're not part of this family. And that is a feeling, and it is a rough feeling to come in, whether you got a raise or not. You got a raise or not, you're coming back in. And those people are gonna have, they're gonna have another attitude towards you now because you were part of that family, you were connected, and they're not gonna say anything. But it's there, and you're gonna feel it. They're gonna feel it. Reconsider. And once all of this stuff is over with, once you get your 37 million or whatever that is that you need, will you be opening the door back to those people? And will you, are you, are you willing to take a loss of people that are gonna, that came in under an understanding that we're hired here, but we're going to SSC now, or any other contractor? We gonna go there? And we don't wanna go there because we wanted to be part of this family, we wanted to grow inside this family. When I came to...
Sir, I will allow 15 more seconds.
I'm so sorry, I am so sorry, but I'm gonna say one last thing, is when I came here, I saw three different people. I worked under all three of them, and what I saw in them, I saw my future. I said, I can grow here, this is where I wanna stay, I wanna stay inside the family. One of them is gone. I have not checked on the other two, but one is gone, and it's amazing. That's what I got for you. Reconsider, there is another way. Reconsider.
Thank you, sir. Corey Stewart?
Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is Corey Stewart, I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Cook Literacy Model School. I'm here to talk about the closure of Cook. Let me just take you back a bit when Cook was restarted. Dr. Wilkins, who was the principal at the time, put up a data point in our first meeting that said 0% of students had passed NEOG in the previous year. Fast forward some years later, and under the direction of both Dr. Wilkins and Selena Tribby, Cook exceeded growth every year, even earning its first C grade under Ms. Tribby, and this is the school you want to close? At Cook, we have been the poster child of what you can do when passionate teachers, staff, and administration meet students that just need a little push to show greatness. And this is what you want to close? Today, I received a text from a parent stating they was thinking of switching their child's school due to the worry and anxiety of the school closing. When I look at our core values, they are accountability, collaboration, equity, integrity, high expectations, and student-centered. The leaders have missed the boat on many of these core values, but tonight, you get a chance to uphold these values. One of the most important ones being student-centered, is a student-centered when we have half an AP? Is a student-centered when we just now got a reading interventionist? Is a student-centered when I get pulled from my classroom because I am the only first responder in the building and having to talk to an Hispanic mother because we let go of our bilingual secretary? In this decision, I implore you to think about the students. In my mind, there are only two routes: leave Cook B, or consolidate Cook with Whitaker, which is a school that is comparable to Cook's academic standards. You say you want to diversify schools, well, here's your chance. Cook is 83% black, 13% Hispanic. Whitaker is 69% white, 16% black, and 8% Hispanic. What a wonderful opportunity to foster diversity in schools. While giving our students the academic rigor they have become accustomed to, it would also alleviate some anxiety that the students would have with switching schools if they saw familiar faces. All I ask tonight is that you do the right thing for the students we say we're making decisions for. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca Gant?
Good evening, board chair Kaplan, members of the board, and superintendent Moore. My name is Francesca Gant, and I am the proud principal of Con Oak Middle School. I'm here to share respectfully and candidly the reality my staff and scholars are living and to ask for your support on solutions that will make an immediate difference. Before the recent reduction in force, Con Oak had two vacancies, and we were prepared to expand upon the magic we created last year for our scholars. Today, we have nine, with four more looming and very likely. Some individuals who were assigned to our school did not arrive. Others arrived but were not prepared for the unique needs of our students and did not acclimate well. Still, others left amid uncertainty. The result is an over-reliance on long-term substitutes, very high class sizes, and severed departments that struggle to provide cohesive instruction. In seventh grade alone, there, three of the six classrooms are led by substitutes. Each week, I meet with a member of my staff that is broken and considering leaving. This process has disproportionately affected highly-impacted schools such as Con Oak Middle School and raised barriers that we previously worked to mitigate. How can we help, how can we be held accountable for meeting targets with large vacancies? How can I exceed growth with depleted resources? I constantly ask my team to do more with less, and they have. They cover classes, absorb additional students, take on extra duties so that our school can function, but let me be clear, we are not, we are not thriving, we are simply surviving. Morale is the lowest I've ever seen in my career, and not for the lack of heart or effort, but because we are running on fumes. Educators know the feeling of February tired, and we are now there in October. Our teachers came to Con Oak to serve and elevate students' lives, they will continue to give everything they can. My worry is that without relief, I will lose the exceptional staff that I still have. So what would make the most difference? First, allow schools such as Con Oak severely impacted by the riff to hire immediately to fill vacancies. If we cannot hire now, we will face even more vacancies later, compounding the very problem we are trying to solve. Second, when considered district-wide cost savings options, please choose approaches that do not further harm people. If option one is viable and sufficient, we struggle to understand the need for punitive alternatives such as pay cuts or furloughs even for principals. We know from past experience that furloughs can carry lifelong financial consequences, altering retirement trajectories for our dedicated staff. Our people and principals are already working at their maximum, reducing compensation or stability will only accelerate attrition. In closing, I ask that the voices of our educators be heard. Please authorize the immediate hiring for severely-impacted schools such as mine, and please vote for scenario one for debt reduction. Please give us a reason to breathe a sigh of relief. We have good people left, let's work to keep them. Thank you.
Selena Tribby?
Good evening. I speak tonight not as a stranger to this work, but as someone who has given nearly three decades to public education. I'm a 27-year veteran educator, and I have been employed and loyal to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools since 1999. I fully understand that I serve at the pleasure of this board, and I have, I have had honor and I am committed to this work with integrity, loyalty, and excellence throughout my career. I've stood on the front lines of this district in good seasons and hard ones, but tonight, I stand before you with a truth that can no longer be dressed up or softened. This district, we have systematically stripped schools bare. We're cutting class size, class sizes, or we're cutting classroom teachers, EC teachers, assistants, freezing positions, eliminating office supports, custodial supports. We don't have custodial subs, and we're slashing instructional funding. And who's carrying the weight? Your employees. We've been left to hold together what others have broken apart, patching the cracks in a structure that should never have been allowed to fracture in the first place. We have shoulder the burden of the riff debacle, absorbing fears and frustration from staff who are not just colleagues, but they are our families. We did this while leading schools and communities where many of our people and our staff members are simply trying to survive. And yet, even in the face of that, my staff, my people, my tribe at Gibson Elementary have rallied. They have stood in the gap. They have loved children harder, they have shown up stronger, and they have fought to keep hope alive. They've cleaned their rooms, they've emptied trash, they have, they've done all of this with increased duties, class sizes, caseloads, and expectations, but they are running on fumes. As a principal, I have, I stand as the face of district leadership, and when trust is broken at the top, it bleeds into every classroom, every hallway, every home. And here's the truth, if I had mismanaged funds or failed to lead with integrity, I would have been held to the fire, escorted out of my building, and forced to pay the price. Now, many believe that principals are the only ones that haven't been furloughed or impacted, but let me be very clear, we have been. We've lost assistant principals who have supported us, staff who have made the school run, funding that allowed us to support teachers, positions that kept the work sustainable. We've absorbed responsibilities that were once shared among teams, we've worked longer hours, we've carried heavier loads, we've made personal sacrifices, and no salary could ever replay that. We have been furloughed, maybe not on the calendar, but we have lived the furlough every single day of our lives, mentally, emotionally, and spiritually. I have said that grace has been my mantra, but as an employee, I have felt more, I have never felt more incompetent and more ineffective and more alone in the work that I, than I do right now. It is not because I stopped caring, but because the weight of the world role has become unbearable. I ask you not to make any more cuts to consider your people because of a structure that does not value their people cannot stand. Thank you.
Colin Tribby?
What she said. Good evening, board chair Kaplan, vice chair Bohannon, members of the board, superintendent Moore. My name is Colin Tribby, and I'm the principal of Wiley Magnet Middle School and the president of the Forsyth Principals Association. I've spoken recently on behalf of assistant principals in our district, but tonight, I come to you to speak on behalf of our principals, specifically regarding option three, which is up for consideration this evening. FPA recently polled our colleagues, and they expressed many concerns around the potential 12-day furloughs of principals, as well as the possible loss of supplements for various employee groups. Based on the community budget update released Friday, it appears some of those cuts may be off the table for now. However, if principal furloughs and supplement cuts are still in play, our concern is that Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools will no longer be able to compete with our surrounding districts. And I don't mean Charlotte and Greensboro, I mean those smaller districts that have always struggled to match the benefits offered in Winston-Salem. Our district's supplements have always been a strong recruitment tool for our district. If other districts, including smaller ones, are able to compete and/or exceed Winston-Salem Forsyth County's principal salaries, principals will be forced to make decisions for their families they never thought they would have to make. Navigating our district through the recovery process that this financial fallout has created requires experience and proven track records for those at the helm of any school in this district. district. We are being asked to do so much more with so much less, as we have lost many valuable employees and resources on our campuses since this began in June. This summer, we will be without our normal leadership teams to help us during the summer months, as we plan for the new year. A.P.s and counselors have been cut to ten months, which means we will need to do the work of many by ourselves and try to get ready for the return of staff. Principals have taken on a huge load this year with every decision that has been made throughout the RIF process. None of us are afraid of getting our hands dirty, and we all certainly have some serious skin in this game, from multiple rewrites of schedules, duty rosters, teaching assignments, academic monitoring shifts, evaluations, additional duties, and the loss of staff, to name a few. Just as my own child lost her amazing math teacher during the first week of middle school this year because her teacher was afraid she would be riffed and took a job in a neighboring district, I fear many school leaders will be forced to do the same. I don't think folks would be unwilling to give up some furlough days, but twelve are excessive and could seriously impact the future of our district. As much as this would negatively impact principals, it would bring in just under five hundred thousand dollars. Considering the financial hole our district is in, as the math lady might say, the math ain't mathin'. Please consider options other than scenario three as you move forward. Some possible solutions. Scenario one, vote for it. Consider two furlough days instead of twelve, or anything less than twelve. Remote working options for the summer to reduce operational costs, and most importantly, look at a four-day school week. States across the U.S. are doing this. It increases staff morale, it increases the hiring and the ability to retain teachers, and it lowers discipline rates. Check that data, it's correct. Thank you.
Peter Antonasi.
Wow. You've heard it tonight from your principals, and now you'll hear it from me. Slow down. In my opinion, this board is receiving bad advice. The board spent over one million dollars on fostering diverse school rezoning maps, and to what end? The proposed maps breathe new life into Cook Elementary by expanding its residential zone and potentially increasing enrollment. But tonight, you're throwing these maps in the trash and making your own map, a map which erases Cook Elementary from existence and moves those students to unfamiliar schools. And for what reason? To save a measly three hundred thousand dollars in building operation costs? That is bad advice. Reassigning Cook students to schools that have not been built yet and will not be ready for the next school year is bad advice. Slow down and wait a month for the next superintendent to weigh in. Moving on to the budget and the S.S.C. contract. To this day, your financial consultant superintendent cannot explain in any detail what fifteen to twenty million dollars was overspent on from that forty-six million dollar deficit. This is money we owe ourselves, is how the superintendent describes the shortfall. What does that even mean? So tonight, the board is asked to riff eighty-five percent of the in-house custodians and enter a ten-year contract with a company the district cannot afford to pay. Last year, the board approved an eight million dollar contract to that company, and today still owes four point two million in excess of that eight million dollar contract. How is that even possible? Let's talk about that four point two million owed. Is the four point two million the outstanding balance owed on the eight million dollar contract? Or is any portion of that four point two million dollar in excess of that eight million dollar contract? That is not a subtle difference and has widely different legal consequences. This situation was addressed at the board retreat you attended last Tuesday. General Counsel Schaefer recommended that the board table a vote if staff does not provide sufficient information required for financial decisions. Now that is good advice. Slow down and wait a month for the next superintendent. The consequences of entering the S.S.C. contract will last ten years. The consequence of closing Cook and selling off the land will last forever. Thank you for your time.
Harry Morley.
Chairman Kaplan, board members, my name is Harry Morley. I'm a thirty-eight-year veteran teacher. I'm here to stand for like my custodian at Speace Elementary School, Gregory Cokely. This man, I want you to know what he does. As an E.C. teacher, I'm always up there, one of the first people in there. So I roll in at six-thirty in the morning, and this man's been there for an hour and a half. Every time I roll in, this guy is vacuuming, cleaning, fixing stuff, getting everything prepped, and he even puts coffee on for the staff, too. And he is there. He is an inaugural part of the Speace Elementary educational setting. He makes a difference with the kids, the staff. He shows up all the time. When I need a table up on a flagpole when I'm going to cough for the staff in the morning, right before like, you know, getting the kids out of the carpool line, I tell him the day before, it's there waiting for me in the morning. If I need something set up, it's there, it's done. This guy takes pride in his work. You can tell it in the building. I mean, the building's immaculate. You walk in there, it's so clean that my transition lenses change the dark because it's the shine that's coming on. This guy will not be, cannot be replaced by another company. I've been to other companies, I've been to like different schools which had Smo and Bud, and they just do not, they do not compare to somebody who's there, who's there and part of the staff, who's there every day, cleaning and taking pride in the building. And the turnover of the staff, a lot of times, of those guys, it's like every three months there's a new person coming in, and they aren't part of the teaching environment, they aren't part of making, you know, the education of the kids, they aren't part of working with the kids. They're just there clocking in, clocking out. So please, consider what you're doing, because guys like Gregory Cokely make a difference, and it's just not clean. He makes a difference for the kids, parents, and he's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Hughes.
Hello. My name is Madeline Hughes. I'm the proud school library media coordinator of Cook Literacy Model School, and as you consider the fate of Cook tonight, I want to remind you of a few things. We have a strong and vibrant culture at Cook, which some of you have experienced as volunteers or guests in our building. We create strong student outcomes. We either made or exceeded expected growth for the last six years. As my colleagues said, we are models for what strong teachers and investment in schools can do. We may only have one hundred and eighty-nine students in our building, but every single one of them matter. The constancy of their education matters, their community matters. Please remember that as you take the vote tonight. And finally, a word about the decision to riff our custodians and transfer their employment to a contract company. Cook had contract cleaners when I first arrived, and it did not work. When they are not brought in-house, they're not members of the family. When they don't have benefits and full-time employment, there's high turnover, they don't stay to learn the job. We have excellent custodial staff at Cook. I fear they will not stay when they are not allowed to continue with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and I don't blame them. Custodians play literally no role in this budget process, and it should not be that we pay down our debt by asking them to do the same work without the benefits of being state employees. That's simply wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin Freeman.
Hey, good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board, and Superintendent Moore. I don't even know what I'm gonna say up here, because my colleagues have said it all. I think about, well, I'll say this. I arrived to work yesterday, and someone said to me, "Mr. Freeman, I checked the board agenda to see if your name was on the personnel report." My response was, "Do I act like I want to retire?" She said, "No, but your tolerance level is the lowest that I've ever seen it." And so I think about my tolerance level, and I think about fatigue and like just being tired. And one of the things that I'm really tired of, I'm tired of being mad, I'm tired of being cynical, I'm tired of being upset daily, I'm tired of coming to board meetings and hearing these things. I'm actually tired of, I'm tired for you all, because I feel like you have an impossible job in terms of what you have to repair and what we have to get to. But when we talk about just the fatigue of all of this, not only do I feel it, and I know that if I'm feeling it, everyone around me is feeling it. I think my wife gets tired of me coming home with it as well, and so, and I say coming home because quite often, she's home when I get home and has been there for a few hours, and she like allowed me to say that, because as we think about the things that principals do in the building every day, you know, our job doesn't end at a particular time. So addressing the sentiment that everyone has felt this in terms of like financial fallout except for principals, I know the intention is to be equitable around everyone chipping in and helping to solve this problem. But equity doesn't necessarily mean that we have to share pain. We share solutions, and we figure out how we move forward from the point that we are, and we do it in a way that protects and says that we value one another, we value our relationships, and we value the place and the business that we do every single day. I say to you all, I'm tired, but I still love pulling up to three oh one North Hawthorne every single day, but I'm absolutely tired. And I said that about me, but it's really about all of the people that do the work that we do. Thank you.
Jenny Easter.
Good evening. There's a lot I wanted to say tonight, but at this point, there's nothing really left to say that hasn't already been said. Whether it's closing a historic school that a community already fought to save years ago, or trading off our custodians to pay off your debt. Make no mistake, continuing to dismantle and privatize our public school district, just like our North Carolina state legislator wants, isn't good work, it's betrayal. And no matter how you justify it, that will be the legacy to your name. People won't remember the numbers you balanced or the debts you erased, they will remember how in a moment of crisis you chose to dismantle what could have been rebuilt. And the most heartbreaking part of all of this, we once believed in you, and that belief is gone now.
Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan. You all know I usually don't read, but I got a lot to ask, so. The meeting calendar, the superintendent answered that a little bit, but in next year's calendar, you all are scheduled to meet once in November, once in December, and in neither one of those meetings is a finance committee meeting. I don't think that's advisable. I think the finance committee ought to meet every month, whether it's policy and curriculum meet or not. The question was already asked, how did you all get four point two million dollars in debt to S.S.C., so I won't belabor that. However, do you really want to enter into a one hundred and eighty-three million dollar ten-year contract with people whose feet you had to hold to the fire to get them to do the job that you were paying them eight million dollars to do? Really? Seriously? And every year, there are going to be increases. The budget, I mean, it's a hundred and eighty-three million dollars, but you know it's going to go up, because cost of living goes up. And every year, not this board, but every board from now on for ten years, will have to say, "Man, we either gotta bite this bullet, or we're gonna have to pay them several million dollars upfront because we're in a hole." Is that really the situation you want to be in? It seems rather misguided attempt to save two point two million dollars. And while two point two million dollars sounds like a lot of money, it is zero point thirty-one percent of the annual budget. Why is Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools contracting with Education Resource Group at thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars a day to tell our high school teachers how to do their job while we're riffing staff? How many hours are in a thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollar day? The contract does not say. Has anyone looked at the effectiveness of this group? I appreciate Mr. Bohannon's response to my email from earlier today acknowledging that he had read it. Of the twelve schools that they have served over the last three years, eleven of whom get grades, one exceeded growth, three met growth, and seven didn't meet growth after spending almost a million dollars. I don't think that's a good return on investment. The other question is, why are we approving a budget amendment tonight for eight point five million dollars that the district got in May of 2025? I'll ask the rest of my questions at the end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, we have seven tonight. First, Tyler Beatty, our auditor, will give us an audit update from Forvis Mazars.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Happy to be here. My name is Tyler Beatty. I'm a audit partner for Forvis Mazars. So we'll, through the agenda today, we'll go through a quick kind of audit timeline and where we're at with the audit of the financial statements and compliance. We'll talk through some significant open items. We'll look at a review of the draft financial information, and then talk about preliminarily major programs that have been selected for our compliance audit. Alrighty, so maybe to backtrack on an audit timeline, so again, we were the firm that was engaged as an external auditor to audit the financial statements and doing a compliance audit for the Board of Education. So that engagement letter was executed June twenty-fifth, 2025. The board has a June thirtieth year-end, so shortly thereafter, the execution of the engagement letter, we started our interim testing, which is a lot of planning, designing, looking at certain purchases, certain revenues, certain contracts before the final balances are provided. And then we shift from our interim testing, which generally occur in July and August of 2025, to our final fieldwork procedures. And that's where our procedures, our substantive testing primarily around the accounts and records for the district for the year ended June thirtieth, 2025, is related to. So you'll see the big blue arrow, we are currently at our final fieldwork procedures. So we're still working through the items needed to complete our procedures related to the financial statements as of and for the year ended June thirtieth, 2025. So after we finish the final fieldwork procedures, we'll work on with management drafting the full financial statements. We'll go through some of our completion procedures in accordance with our professional standards. We'll conclude on audit findings and summaries and liaise with management related to those findings. Then after all that's done, we'll also go through an engagement executive, engagement quality reviews that have to happen, and then after that, we will approve and release the financial statement audit for the year. the year ending June 30th, 2025. Just a reminder, the LGC audit deadline this year to complete all of those steps is December 31st, 2025. So now we'll update the board with some significant items that we're still waiting on, which obviously we need in order to complete our procedures. So obviously, there's still some open items that we're working on with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools management. The team is working hard. There's a litany of requests that were needed in order to complete our procedures. Those efforts are still ongoing. There's an OMB compliance supplement. So OMB stands for Office of Management and Budget. And think of this as like an audit manual that's released by the Office of Management and Budget that dictates to auditors the procedures that they have to take on as part of the compliance procedures. The draft was released in August of 2025. The final compliance supplement has not been released by the OMB yet. So we're precluded from releasing the audit report until the OMB releases their compliance supplement, which we use as a tool to complete our audit procedures. There's a dental OPEB valuation report that's, that's prepared by an actuary. The boards engage that actuary, they're performing those procedures, but it's to measure and value the OPEB liability for the dental plan as of June 30th, 2025. I believe that third party is still working on those procedures, but we haven't received the final report yet. And then lastly, there's an internal control engagement that is required by DPI that another firm, I believe, has currently been selected to do. That deadline, I believe, is December 31st, 2025. So as your financial statement auditor, when other, when other procedures, when other consulting arrangements occur, we have to consider that as part of our auditing procedures in accordance with the Yellow Book, which is the professional standards that we adhere to. So again, we need to liaise with that other firm. We need to have conversations with that other firm to understand and obtain clarity between their roles and responsibilities, how it could impact our procedures, if anything, before we can conclude and release our financial statement audit. So what we have done since we are presenting, again, June 30th, 2025 information, so we are four months removed from the end of the year. We did want to provide some draft financial statement highlights. And again, these, this information is in draft form. We aren't through with our procedures, so there's potential for adjustments. But what we tried to extract were, number one, your fund balance for Exhibit 3 for your governmental funds as of June 30th, 2025. So this is effectively a balance sheet for each fund, your general fund, state public school fund, individual schools, capital outlay, and then special revenue, which is your federal, or your special revenue, which is your Fund 8 fund. So you'll notice total fund balances deficit. There is a $30.9 million total fund balance deficit that I believe has been alluded to in the general fund. The primary reason for that is there is $33.8 million in accounts payable and accrued expenses, which is primarily concentrated to the money that's owed back to the state, the custodial contracts, school resources with the county. The capital outlay fund has around a $2.5 million deficit, and then your special revenue fund has $120,000 deficit. So again, this is a snapshot of your account balances as of June 30th, 2025 in draft form. Moving on, so this is, again, it's the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, for your governmental funds, it's in draft form, but it includes, again, all your governmental funds. The, the net change in fund balance for the general fund was 43.4 million, which I think is the amount that's been alluded to previously. So how do we arrive at a $30.9 million fund deficit? You spent 43.4 in fiscal year '25. You had $12.8 million in fund balance as of June 30th, 2024. That's how you arrive at the $30.9 million fund deficit as of June 30th, 2025. And then similarly for the capital outlay fund, the capital outlay fund spent $3.9 million in June 30th, 2025 currently. And then the special revenue fund actually had revenues and access of expenditures of around 1.9 million. And then quickly, our compliance office. So again, it's a risk-based approach that auditors take to identify major programs that are subject to compliance testing. So the three major federal programs we've identified is Title I, Special Education, and Supporting Effective Instruction. And again, the compliance supplement that's released by the Office of Management and Budget, that's the tool that we use that assists us in auditing these compliance programs. So if we don't have the final report, we're not, we can't confirm what the OMB wants us to look at, which is why we need the OMB compliance supplement. And then the state program is the State Public School Fund, which is required to be subject to compliance procedures every single year. So that's all I had as far as a quick update. Again, we are still working on our audit procedures. Wanted to provide an update to the board and happy to take any questions or provide any clarifying answers.
Yes, thank you. Board Member Brown Gaither.
My question is, what are the open items that are still required from the system?
Yeah, it's a great question. I believe, I think it, it changes day by day. We provide an open items list to your interim finance officer, and she works with compliance staff or with accounting staff to receive those items. It could be a litany of items. And again, I'm happy to share the, the comprehensive outstanding items list with you directly, but it can be anything from, we, we take a sample of an expenditure or revenue, or we're looking to clarify from the county what's owed from the school district to the county. It could be revenues that were received from the state, and we're working on the months allocated versus months used report. So again, it's, it's specific sampling items or it's follow-up questions that we have related to analytical procedures that we're performing. And again, it's, it's probably around 20 to 30 items currently, but your, your, your accounting team is working diligently on that. I would say we're having update calls once every 48 hours, and they understand that the information that needs to be provided.
I'm just a little concerned because this is what got us in some of the shape last year. We kept hearing that you all weren't getting some of the materials from our system. And I want to make sure we don't get to February, March, April before we get a final report.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to when the final report will happen because, again, I can't speculate as to when we will receive the items that we need. What I can say is that the interim financial information that was provided, I don't know if it's going to materially change, that would change the direction of the actions that the board needs to take now.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So a couple of questions, I think. First, the, is, is there sort of an established deadline in terms of when you all need to receive the things on that list in order to meet the established deadline of December? End of December? And if it doesn't, yeah, can you?
Yeah, that's, I, I would say, let me go back to here. So generally, we would look for four to five weeks between finishing Number 3 to complete 4, 5, and 6. So when the deadline, which just shifted, was October 31st for most of our school districts, we kind of had a drop dead date by the end of September to have our final fieldwork procedures complete. Having said that, the LGC this year transitioned the deadline back, which is giving school districts more time. So I guess all of that to say, we're, we're still trending towards the December 31st deadline, but the assumption is that we would need the majority of this information in the next few weeks and able to hit that deadline because we do have holidays through the November and December timeframes, which you previously didn't have in the month of October.
Okay. And so I guess the, the, the follow-up question was, on that same slide where you included the additional engagement, which we, we now know who the vendor is for that as the state board voted on that, I believe, yesterday, does, is that going to impact, like now that the, like, I, I know that the scope of that was going to be sort of determinative in terms of how it would impact the, the completion of our audit. Is, is that a variable still or no?
Yeah, so I haven't seen the engagement letter. We, we didn't see what professional standards this other firm was adhering to in their engagement. So I, I want to be careful to speculate. I did see in their, their proposal, they're proposing to serve as an, an internal auditor for the Board of Education. And they would perform procedures presumably in accordance with the Yellow Book, the AICPA, and then there's an Institute of Internal Auditors that prescribes procedures that they would follow and accommodate in their engagement.
Board Member Crowley.
Mr. Beatty, how long have you been doing our school district's audit?
Me personally? Or I think I've been working on the district's audit in some capacity since probably 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Barr.
You know, what I was wondering as a, as a board member, is it possible for us to, to get a list of the open items?
I think you could probably request that from management. I think they have that information.
I, I, I have the list that was most recently sent out, yes. And I, I know that we've worked through some of those things already. It's reports, stuff that has to be put together. But I can, I can get an updated list and we can work through it.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So there was, so do we have the engagement letter or whatever content from the state board to be able to maybe provide so that we can ascertain, like, maybe we could provide that to our auditors so that we can ascertain whether or not there'll be an impact on the completion? And the reason why I ask is because I think, you know, to, to Board Member Brown Gaither's point, the delay of our audit last year was a variable in us discovering our financial issues. And so if there's a potential that this impact, that there's an impact from this additional engagement from the state board, I think we need to know that so that we need to communicate that to the public.
So in, in the budget update that I'm presenting tonight, I have uploaded what the state board put in their materials, which was the letter to the firm or that, I don't know, it's the award letter. I don't know if it's the full scope of the engagement, but the award letter is uploaded in simply. And I, I mean, I can, if Tyler doesn't have it, I can certainly send it to him. I don't know if that's exactly what he's looking for, though.
Yeah, I mean, again, the, in, in the proposal for services that was part of the State Boards of Education's materials, it appears that the role that the other firm is going to play is an internal audit function. If they're playing an internal audit function, the Yellow Book describes the procedures that an external auditor would use as far as an internal audit function of another firm. So all of that to say, there will likely need to be conversations and coordination, at least clarifying conversations with the other firm before we could release our audit. But I haven't seen the engagement letter to be able to ascertain what professional standards or what the scope of the engagement is.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Next, we're going to talk about our Board of Education meeting calendar. Every December, we vote as a board to adopt a calendar. And so you'll see a draft in front of you, and it shows where we have meetings and committee meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. And of course, there are some exceptions when you get into the holidays of November and December. So kind of want to open up the discussion and sort of talk about some possibilities. Either we can keep it like we are, we could extend the time pretty much like we did today where we could possibly start at 3:00, have committee meetings from 3:00 to 4:00, and then go into closed at 5:00, yeah, 3:00 to 5:00, and then at 6:30 have our regular meeting. Another idea is something that we did do in the past, and I'm going to pass out an example to board members to take a look at that may not have been here at that time. And that is to do something a little bit different where you still have the second and fourth Tuesdays, but on the second Tuesday, you would have what would be called a work session where you would go through all of your committee meetings. And ideas for starting that could be from 3:00 to 7:00. You could have an optional closed, and you could also add a section for action for the full board or new business. And the board meetings would be on the fourth Tuesday. So you would have a work session that would go through all of your committees, an optional closed session, and a, a time for new business, just because sometimes one board meeting a month is not going to handle all of that, and then to be able to have some full, some action. So as full board. So just kind of want to take a look at that and just open up the conversation to see what everybody would like to do. There any ideas? Yes, Board Member Watts.
I, I tend to favor what we did today, starting earlier at, at 3:00, from 3:00 to 5:00 for committees and then going into closed session. It gives us a little more time to talk about the curriculum pieces and funding the committee, the committee pieces. And also, I want to, if you could possibly consider looking at July as continuing to do the work in July as well, and still taking a break in July.
So you're saying do not take a break in July?
Correct.
And still have two board meetings. Okay. Any other ideas? Yes, Board Member Miller.
I really liked how we did it today in that we're starting something new that I think is awesome. When we go into closed, we have plenty of time, the way that we did it today. But any concerns that board members have can, we can start our meeting out like that. I think it's very productive instead of being rushed right at the end. And some of our current concerns have not been heard because of that. So I would vote for how we did it today.
Okay. And, and of course, this is a vote, we're just discussing this today. This will be a vote in December. Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
Question is, if we're looking at the draft that you, that we have here, and what we're also looking at starting at 3:00, would that be the continuation of two committees per?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would.
The one thing I would like to add to that is there is a lack because we don't have any finance at all in November and December. So that's going almost three months. And so we need to add that in there. I don't know if it needs to replace the buildings and grounds.
So if I could, if I could just say what I thought my understanding was. I thought my, my understanding was that B and G and policy would come in November and finance and curriculum would come in December.
I think that's just an era, a color, an era, I believe.
But I mean, that's what, and so I don't know if that's for next year, but I think that's because I wouldn't pay attention to next year. But I thought that's what we were doing next month and the following month.
Yeah. I believe that's the case. Board Member Crowley.
I, I think we have to have finance every month. So we would have to do something different for November and December.
Good point, yes.
To make room for finance every, every month, we have to do the financials.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I, I mean, I, I would be comfortable with adding, so however you do it, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't have one preference over whether or not you replace one of the committees in November, December. I would be actually open to adding a special, like a, a set finance committee meeting date that may not be that, that day, that separate, if we, if we need to. Because I'm, I know that some, there might be some business for policy or curriculum or buildings and grounds, and so I don't want to necessarily knock one of those off the calendar. But I think, you know, I'm okay with adding another meeting in November. another meeting in November and December for finance, so that we have a finance committee meeting. I mean, I think we're already meeting less because we only have one actual board meeting, I think, that month as well. So, I'd be fine with that.
Yes.
Just one additional piece of feedback. For the current November and December meetings, because they happen around, like, the 10th, November 10th, and then that, if you wanted to do finance committee, which like, we can, we're planning to do it in December, but we can't, it's too quick after the end of the month to have the end-of-month actuals. So, even though we're not having one at the end of November, when we have one on December 8th, 9th, 10th, whatever that day is, it'll have to be for October, because we don't have all the data completed and ready to go in time for November. So, if you keep the same sort of calendar where your meetings are early, the one meeting you have per month is early in November and early in December, just to keep in mind that you need at least, like, the third week. And the meeting will have to be in the third week in order to have the financials ready. Okay, making sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay.
I do have one other thought.
Board Member Crowley?
It doesn't, I mean, to do the financials, it doesn't have to be at a finance committee meeting. I mean, I'd be, I would be fine with it being presented at the full board meeting. But they just, I'm just saying, that component, that finance, you know, financial reporting component, we have to have once a month.
Thank you. So, we're gonna move on. Dr. Tamesha Barnes-Jones, our Chief of Schools. We'll discuss the school improvement plans.
Good evening, board members. Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent Moore. I'm here tonight to present to you for review our 2526 school improvement plan. Pursuant to board policy, every school must have a school improvement plan. They are created collaboratively with their school improvement team that consists of principals, assistant principals, teachers, non-instructional and instructional support staff, and parents of students who are enrolled. Presenting them to you for review tonight, and will come to a later board meeting for your approval. The process began before June 30th, where our schools went through the FAMS. And from that, created three to five goals based on their needs. We do house our school improvement plans in the NC Star platform, where they are aligned to research-based indicators. They are monitored and assessed and adjusted. They work in collaboration with our area superintendents and our school improvement directors. We give ongoing feedback after they have their meetings. You will note, as you review the plans, that they are aligned to our district priorities right now, academics, behavior, culture, and attendance. You'll also note that there are some common strategies throughout the plans, including strengthening our PLTs, leveraging our advanced teacher roles, like our MCLs, ongoing observation and feedback coaching cycles to build teacher capacity, and leveraging data-informed instructional practices. I want you to know that our schools that are currently in low-performing status have adjusted their school improvement goals to ensure that there's goal aligned to coming off of the state's low-performing school list. As a part of our district's commitment to supporting those schools, we have developed a targeted support plan. I think we briefed in a committee meeting a few weeks ago, a curriculum committee meeting. That includes having monitored site visits, quarterly professional development, ongoing monitoring and feedback. And so, pursuant to State Board policy as well, we're gonna keep the school improvement plans open for community feedback. They're always available. But this year, we're giving them opportunity, giving our community an opportunity to provide feedback. There are a couple of ways that community members can access the school improvement plans. They can go right to the school's website and access them. I've also placed a link here that will take our community to logins and passwords for all of our schools. And then, we have a feedback link that our community can access. It'll be open until November 4th. They click on the link, choose the school they want to provide feedback on, and then just provide that feedback. Our Assistant Superintendent of Accountability is helping to monitor that, so we can get that feedback to schools. And that is it. Do you have any questions for me? Yes, sir?
Two questions. Would you please elaborate a little more about how we're using the NC Star indicators to align with our school improvement plans? And second, when schools are using Title I funds for contracted services, how does that get aligned to their school improvement plan? And what is the approval on that process?
Oh, that's good, those are good questions. And so, schools can leverage their Title I funds to provide different strategies, professional development. And it must align to the goals in their school improvement plan. And so, that is reviewed. Our CAT Demov is also reviewing that. That's the person that's over our Title I, our area superintendents. And then, there's an approval process for them to be able to use the Title I funds. So, our area superintendents also have to approve that. With regard to the indicators, and so, NC Star has about 20 research-based indicators. It is a way for our state and for our schools to have a streamlined way of aligning the strategies. They're all research-based. They are to pick five to 12 of those indicators that are aligned to those strategies. All of the, our state is using the NC Star. And so, those indicators, again, are all aligned to research-based strategies. Again, it helps the schools to align what they're doing to meet their goals.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Miller?
Yes, you mentioned a few slides back that you want to strengthen your PLTs. Can you elaborate on that? How would you do that?
So, that is one of our district priorities. We're working in collaboration with our instructional services team. We have developed, in collaboration with instructional services, a PLT protocol and guidebook. Right now, we're rolling out all of the professional development aligned to PLT facilitation, PLT planning, PLT assessments. And then, we have a walkthrough monitoring tool that we're leveraging to assess how our PLTs are doing that actually gives us feedback on what additional professional development we need to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will discuss the Contracted Custodial Services Addendum for Service and Staffing Changes.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent Moore. So, as a quick recap for our current custodial model, we are currently a blended model of contracted services in 34 of our schools and our non-school facilities, with the exception of this building, the education building. We are currently in a five-year agreement with SSC, and we are in year three of that current agreement. So, in fiscal year '25, we incurred a debt of $4.25 million with SSC. That debt began in December of 2024, when we stopped paying the invoices for the contract that we have with SSC, plus a few additional services that are part of that contract for special events. So, since we've been having negotiations with SSC around how to try and pay off that debt, we've discussed a 12-month payment plan option. And we've also reviewed several different plans for adding additional schools to that contract with a portion of debt amortization, as well as some plans for full debt amortization. And so, in the latest updates, we did a letter of intent with SSC and narrowed down those negotiations to selecting and finalizing either a seven- or 10-year option and continuing to pursue those two models, as opposed to the others, several options that we began discussing. And so, in that pursuit of that letter of intent and looking at those funds, this is a kind of side-by-side comparison for you of the current annual expenditures for that combination, that contracted services and that in-house service as well, side-by-side with the seven-year option and the 10-year option, both which have the full amortization of the $4.2 million debt. And so, in this proposed addendum, this is a 10-year agreement, but this is an annual agreement that will come before the board. This is a January-through-December contract. And so, it will become to the board around this time each year for consideration for any type of addendums, whether that be rate increases, changes in services, changes in scope, any major material changes that we wish to make. And that can be done up to nine additional times throughout the course of that 10-year term. Staffing in this agreement, all staffing will be hired and managed by SSC, with up to 35 staff members remaining on the WSFCS payroll. And I'll speak a little bit more on some later slides as to where that number 35 comes from. The financials for this 10-year agreement include what's called a sign-on bonus of the $4.2 million, which is that amortized debt repayment, as well as some startup costs to be able to support hiring and onboarding of existing staff members on WSFCS payroll, as well as filling vacancies for our schools that are currently experiencing that. Equipment funds to support any additional needs that are there, so that the employees have the equipment that they need, excuse me. And that is a total contracted rate of $16.88 million per year. And so, just to kind of show that new contract on its own slide, so it's just a little bit clearer for you. This was presented on October 14th. And so, for those 35 additional, sorry, staff members that would remain on the WSFCS payroll, you also have an accounts receivable of $28,000 annually for each one of those staff members up until a time that those positions attrition over to the SSC contract. Attrition could happen because an employee resigns or an employee retires of those 35. And so, what you see here on that in-house custodial staffing labor line is $1.2 million, which is a subtraction of that 28 per employee. So, that's a total of $2.4 million prior to having that deduction per employee. Because there is still personnel that remains on the district payroll, there is still a need to provide some substitute support for those schools and for those staff members at $70,000, as well as management to continue to support a variety of functions. That is not one individual's salary. That is a combination of a percentage of several different salaries from staff members in schools processing payroll, the Finance Division, the HR Division for processing employee actions and providing support functions, and other staff as well to help manage the contract with SSC. The supplies that you see here remaining, so, in this contract, all of the consumable supplies will transition over to the contract. The 105 you see here is for those non-consumable items, such as walk-off mats, trashcans for teacher classrooms. And this is an allocation per year, per school, to be able to refresh and replenish those items as they are damaged and need to have done. And so, you can see that annual total amount for a standard full year of that contract would be the $18.3 million. So, should we proceed with this contract? Fiscal year '26 that we're currently in would, of course, look slightly different. And that is because we currently have a blended year. And so, you have additional in-house costs for that July-to-December timeline, because this contract would take effect in January. You have the contracted amount for SSC that you've also paid to date, plus a new rate that would take effect January 1, and some supply costs that have already been incurred for the school year, bringing that total for this year to $19.3 million. And so, the staff recommendation this evening for the board is to consider approval for that 10-year term with an annual renewal. So, a one-year contract, nine annual renewals, a total of a 10-year term. That would be a contractual rate of $16.88 million per year. Additionally, in order to kind of operationalize that contract, it would be the request that the board approve a reduction in force to transition the existing personnel over to SSC. Excuse me. And so, a few takeaways before I move into some information about the reduction in force. The board asked a few questions on October 14th around termination of this contract. And so, I do just want to take a moment and speak to that. And so, with this contract being an annual renewal, it allows you the opportunity to make any adjustments each year and to potentially terminate that contract at a period of time that you believe you would maybe like to do business in a different manner or with someone else. And so, you can also make any types of adjustments to that contract you so desire to make. One of the additional pieces that you have provided this evening is the amortization schedule for the course of that 10 years as well, so that you can clearly see, over the term of that contract, what those dollar amounts look like year over year, so that you could make those decisions should you choose to do so. All personnel will be offered a position with SSC with this contract approval. That will be in their current location, at their current rate of pay, and at their current hours. Those individuals will also have an opportunity to pursue any of the vacancies that we have currently. We have about 25 throughout the district. That does change periodically, but that's the latest update that I have for you. And so, if an individual was part-time and desired to be full-time, that opportunity would be available to them. And the vacancies that we currently have that are frozen would be allowed to be filled to support our schools that are currently struggling with not having custodial services. Any individuals that are currently eligible for retirement from the district will still be provided an opportunity to work with SSC. They can take retirement from the district and the state if they so choose, and still continue to pursue that option with SSC and keep working in their same school with their same family. We have a number of sub-custodians that are retirees with the district. Those retirees have an hours restriction because of that retirement. These individuals would be allowed to also pursue an opportunity of employment with SSC, and there would be no restriction because it would not be part of the state system. And last but not least, the amortization repayment over the 10-year period reduces the contracted rate and the overall rate for custodial services year over year, which gives the board opportunities to be able to meet other needs that they have, at least for the short term, if not the long term. It was a duplicate slide, I apologize. So, talking a little bit about the reduction in force criteria, Dr. Wykart presented these slides to you on October 14th. And so, the standard process in Policy 41193 would be followed, just as it has been in previous practices. This policy also allows the superintendent or the Board of Education to add additional criteria to this protocol, should they so choose. And so, in looking at this employment group of 216 individuals, we elected to add an additional criteria for individuals with 15 years or more service with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools paid into the teacher retirement system. And you can see on the slide here, a threshold level for 25 years and up, 20 to 25 years, and then 15 to 20 years, and a points associated with each one of those three categories. So, the staffing data that I reported to you on September 30th was that 216 custodial personnel in our sites and seven, excuse me, custodial service management team members. That next portion of the slide you see shows you the individuals of that 216 that are in each of those thresholds in each of those thresholds that I just mentioned for those additional points allocations in the reduction in force criteria. Four of those, four of those 39 individuals, at the time I presented this, have already completed retirement paperwork, and I did not update that 2026 date that Ms. Crowley pointed out. I apologize. And so that is the reason for the number of up to 35 employees to remain on that WSFCS payroll. In looking at numbers today, we are currently at around 187 custodians on the current payroll, down from 216. So upon board decision this evening, should you proceed with approving both of the items that I mentioned on the recommendation slide, communication would go out to each individual tomorrow in that employee group to give them an update of next steps, FAQ on various pieces of information about retirement, about benefits, about what to expect next over the coming days. From October 30th through December 15th, we will schedule individual meetings with staff members to walk them through what the transition and the process would look like, and set up meetings for each one of them to be able to meet with the representative of SSC, to receive the offer letter from them, and to have an opportunity to make that selection. They would all remain on payroll until December 31st with Winston-Salem and transition January 1. That seems like a long timeline. I do want to point out that that is to allow individuals an opportunity, if they are eligible for retirement, to take the time to do that paperwork and make those decisions. We will not be taking that amount of time to inform them and sit down and have conversations that would take place in the next couple of weeks. So I will turn it over to the board for any discussion or questions that you may have.
Yes, Board Member Miller.
Yes. As far as the process to terminate the SSC contract, are there any penalties associated with that?
So I wouldn't define them necessarily as a penalty. And so the contract defines the termination as giving 120 days notice. That amount of notice would be necessary for us to be able to transition services. If you're giving notice for cause, then you have to give a contractor an opportunity to cure whatever that situation may be and remedy the situation. If they're unable to remedy it, then you would proceed with termination. You can also terminate if there is inability to appropriate the funds to the contract, and you could then, at that point in time, whatever debt were remaining on that amortization schedule is what would be due upon the termination date.
Okay. And to follow up on that, if we were not happy, let's say after the first year, we've decided it's just not working, when would that be effective as far as our ability to
So I'm trying to give you a date scenario. That's why I'm pausing. So if we were to get through another year and we were to decide that we did not want to proceed with this process, we would sit down, we would have negotiations and conversations, we would need to discuss the debt that needs to be repaid, the timeline for that, and how it is that the board desires to proceed with custodial services to be able to mobilize that process. If we were to select a different contractor, if you were to do a phased-in approach of returning services to in-house, what that would look like, and the cost implications to go along with that. I will just remind the board that if you were fully contracted in-house, you would be looking at about 26 million per year in the last estimates that we provided.
Okay, thank you.
And just, can I just make a point of clarification also? You would want, based on the 120 days thing, you'd want the board decision on any sort of changes to the contract to happen 120 days prior to that annual renewal that happens January 1st. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You would contractually have to give notice by that time, yes.
Right. So 120 days before January 1st. So all the work to review and make decisions and that sort of thing, you'd want to happen in time to still have 120 days prior to the January 1 renewal.
Board Member Crowley.
Thanks. You answered one of the questions because at least this board, if not previous boards, have always talked about having our people in-house and that that was the ideal. But you're saying to do that would cost $26 million each year, and this contract with SSC, even with the debt repayment, is like 18 million a year.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Watts.
So a lot of people are using the term RIF tonight. Could you please explain why we have to use the term RIF when we're transitioning from one to the other? Could you explain why we have to use that term RIF?
Sure. So anytime that there is a reduction in a specific pay group or pay class, our board policies, and I'll ask our legal to correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, is obligated to enact a reduction in force to be able to remove that position from its payroll. DM, is there anything you wanted to add to clarify that, that I said non-legally?
So while she's getting ready for that, so we are saying that every current employee will have the opportunity to transfer to our new contractor services, same school, same location, same pay rate.
Yes. And if you don't mind me elaborating just a tad bit longer further, so I'll use myself as an example. Let's say I was a 31-year custodian, which is what we have, and I sat down with SSC and they said, "You're at X school, and this is what you make per hour, and this is your hours. We would like to give you this offer." I can also sit down with a state benefit specialist. I can retire and receive my 30-year pension, and I can also take the job offer with SSC and keep working in my same school.
And just to elaborate, Board Member Watts, Ms. Richards is correct. The reason why it's referred to as a reduction in force is because we have 216 custodial positions. We are reducing that down to a maximum of 35. And so we have to apply the criteria in the policy to determine how to select those individuals as opposed to choosing some sort of arbitrary measure, but that's why it's called the RIF.
Thank you.
And some people may not choose to accept that offer from SSC.
Board Member Crowley.
Thanks. Okay, so if I put in 15 years for the school system and I get to stay on in my position, I'm good. For people who've paid into the school system under 15 years, like paid into retirement, do they get to, do they get that retirement money still?
So every individual person has a different circumstance. So at 20 years of service, if you were at 50 years of age, you could take retirement. At 15 years and 60, so there's lots of different criteria. Each individual will have an opportunity to meet with one of the HR benefit specialists through this process, to know exactly where their years are and exactly what those options are. You can leave funds that you've paid into the retirement system there, and let's just say the board will return to in-house services in four years. That money would be there, they would return to the district, and they would continue to pick up on their years of service with the district. They can also choose to take a payout or transfer those funds to an additional retirement fund. All of those are individual options that the employees will have, and we will advise them of those for each of their circumstances.
Okay.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Well, and this, once, once you're vested, though, you're vested. Like, once you have the five years of service, you might not be able to retire until you reach a certain age, but you still are vested in the state retirement system.
You are still vested. Ms. Pizzillo, is that correct? Oh, you're over here.
Yes. Once they are at the five-year mark...
Sorry. Can you?
Yes. Thank you.
That is correct. Once they are at the five-year mark, they are vested in the state retirement system. And so those years never go away unless, like Ms. Richards spoke to, they choose to cash them out. They will remain sitting until such time they come back and retire with those years or continue to add to those years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I have just a couple of questions just about the, going back to our sort of working relationship with SSC. So in, in December 19th, I believe it was the 19th.
Yep.
We, that of 2022, that's when we executed the contract originally, right?
Yes.
Well, I think. The first nine months or so weren't very good, and I remember we had a workshop, and I believe it was the following September, where we talked about what the options were in order to, like, try to get things fixed.
Yes.
Then we elected to partially extend the contract. So it's always, it's going to be up, even if we chose to do the 10-year, it will be up for renewal every year. So what we did, I believe in 2023, was as opposed to renewing for another year, I think we renewed for like three months from January to March.
That's correct.
To basically give them time to cure because we weren't gonna, you know, if they weren't, if they didn't fix it, we were not gonna renew. Or I can't speak for the board, but that was the sort of feeling, is to give them an opportunity to be able to fix it.
Yes. We did a three-month, and then we extended to a six-month. SSC, through that process, we had several issues. They actually replaced the entire management team and several other personnel due to some inefficiencies in operating that contract. And we were able to then continue on with an annual renewal after that time period. But you are correct, we did short renewals to give them opportunity.
And that was also, I mean, is that option still available in the event that we encounter similar issues?
Yes. So we would always refer back to the contract for specifically what it says. There's always an, you always have to give a contractor an opportunity to cure. And so we would go through that formal process. We would bring that to the board, have those discussions about the intent, and if we needed to make any adjustments or do a shorter renewal, we would work to do that. So that is an option.
Okay. And so also part of that conversation was a reduction of their scope in terms of the amount of schools they had.
Yes.
And we brought a portion back in-house. I think the difference was about $4 million.
Yes, we brought 10 back in-house.
And so, and that was a cost incurred, and I believe that was during the '23-'24 fiscal year, correct?
Uh, yes.
And that's the same, that's the same year where I think we utilized a lot of fund balance. That was...
Yes. So you, there was equipment cost in the five-year agreement for each of those 10 sites that was amortized in that agreement. And so when we opted to pull those 10 schools back, we needed the equipment, and so there was a, the depreciation cycle applied for what was remaining on that amortization cycle that we paid, and that is on the records for how we transitioned. So you had some costs there to transition back in-house, and then you also had added salaries for the added state benefits packages.
And if I'm remembering correctly, that was an expense because we didn't budget for that increase, that was an expense we utilized fund balance for?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So the last question is, in the event that we, or a future board decides that they don't want to continue, they don't want to annually renew it, based on what I read in the addenda, the fourth addendum, what has not been amortized would be due immediately?
It would be due upon the termination date. So if we go over that 120 days and you give notice for that termination date of, say, December 31st, you would need to ensure that you were able to pay anything that had not been amortized off and paid at that time.
But in the event the board is in a better financial position, let's say for some reason we, we are able to accumulate a significant amount of fund balance, and we wanted to terminate the contract and pay that down, I mean, pay that off because we had the means to, that is an option for the board, if the board has the means to pay it out.
That could be a board option, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So moving on, then Lauren will also discuss the Cook literacy model, school closure, and residential boundary recommendations.
I'll say good evening again. So, thank you, Kevin. So in opening this presentation this evening, I wanted to go back to a presentation we did with the board in August and recap our board policy 6135 around school closures. And so this is the policy that staff reviewed in beginning to evaluate all facilities throughout the district for opportunities or discussions that needed to be had about any conditions or utilization of facilities. And so those are the two primary guiding factors in this policy when we are looking at potentially closing a school. What is the utilization or underutilization of a facility? And then are there excessive operating costs associated with running that facility? And is the condition of a, of a state that needs to be reviewed and considered for replacement? And so over the last several months, we've done a different amount of data review. We, of course, reviewed that policy, and we have also reviewed some of our enrollment data. And so we have looked at our enrollment for the last three years that has been declining. And we've also taken a look at our predicted enrollment for the next 10-year cycle that is also showing a decline. And you may recall that at the time we showed the predicted enrollment, today's enrollment is actually lower than where that prediction showed us to be. We have done a discussion around our various facility conditions. There were three schools that through the conditions evaluation were shared with the board as of a state where the repairs and capital expenditures are at a place where they exceed a major renovation and are more aligned with a building replacement. And we have reviewed staffing standards for our schools to optimize state funding that we received to support our students. And we have also discussed the utilization of each of the facilities and the enrollment that exists in those schools currently today. And so taking a look at a snapshot specifically for Cook literacy model, this school was built in 1950. We did a major renovation in 2019, which also tells us that we are at a threshold where we would need to be considering a major renovation since 1999 for this site. We've discussed the annual operating costs, the annual staffing costs to be able to support teachers and students that reside within the school. And we have also evaluated the rebuild cost for an elementary school at 50 million. And again, just a reminder, that does not include any type of a demolishment of a building or grading that would be needed at a site that is specifically new construction on a land plot. The capacity at Cook Elementary School is at 500 students, and the enrollment for our first month average daily membership was at 186 students. And so when staff assesses the condition of the facility and the enrollment in the facility against our board policy, the things that we are able to conclude are that the utilization of the school is at 37%. The enrollment at that school has been declining and continues to decline, and the facility condition is at a state where it is needing a major renovation, which actually constitutes a rebuild of the facility. So I'm going to take a moment and turn the presentation over to Frank Pantano with magnet choice and student assignment to give you some specific data around Cook's enrollment and talk with you about the residential boundary maps that we discussed and give you some additional information this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren, and thank you, board, for hearing me tonight. So talking about the number of students currently at Cook, we have those students that are residential and then those students that are non-residential to Cook. So this change would most impact those that are currently residentially assigned because they would need a new residential assignment with the closure of Cook. So that's what, what we'll be talking about when we're looking at maps and things like that, those students that happen to live in addresses that are currently within the Cook zone that exists today. So just looking at these numbers, one thing I want to point out is that since the change wouldn't be happening until next year, it wouldn't be affecting all the students, it would be affecting the second line. So 125 total K4 students would be affected by these new boundaries that I'm about to share with you. So talking about what those future assignments could look like, the current K4 students will be assigned to a new residential school, were you to elect to close Cook. And for those non-residential students, they would be reassigned to whatever their residential school is currently. And for all of our students, of course, we also have magnet and choice options. All students can apply for a different school assignment between November 1st and January 20, January 30th, I should say, through the end of January. So those, those assignments are coming up. I think one of our policy comments talked about, we've got a magnet fair coming up on November 1st. And so we're also going to be doing specific outreach to Cook to make sure, if that decision is made, to make sure those families feel welcome to any of our magnet and choice options in addition to the residential options you're about to see. So residential assignment options. So one quick piece of sort of contextualization about this is that, you know, in my job in student assignment, it's all about pigeonhole. You got to figure out how many seats you need and where all the kids are going to go for schools. And we currently have 41 elementary schools that have residential zones, and we have less kids to assign to those 41 residential schools. So of course, you know, if you're redistributing, you need to distribute across many schools. So I'm going to talk about two different options that show different numbers of schools that those students could be reassigned to. So the first option is the least number of extra schools that would be assigned, and that is Ashley, Brunson, and Kimberly Park. And I'm going to show you a picture of the current map as it stands today. You can see Cook, and it has this large area in the center here that's got two rectangles collected, connected by a corridor. For contextualization, this red line coming down, I don't know if my mouse shows, but the big red line right in the middle is 50... the big red line right in the middle is 52. And so, so option one would reassign like that, which would bring Brunson more in line. Now, either address for Brunson this would work for, but it also is really helpful for the new address for Brunson because it lets students that are right across the street from the new address be able to go to that school. And it also reassigned some of the addresses that are east of 52 to Ashley. And it assigns all of the current Boston Thurmond area that goes to Cook to Kimberly Park. So that's option one. So that's why it's three schools, Ashley Brunson and Kimberly Park. Option, so some quick, quick pro-cons about this. One of the, one of the exciting things about this option two is that, you know, like I mentioned, Boston Thurmond area gets to all go to one school. That would be a pro. One con would be that it does put a lot of students in Kimberly Park, and so there might need to be things that we look at as far as how to do that. Because of course, my pigeonhole example again, if we really want to distribute, you want to distribute across all 40 schools to make things be the best numerically, but we can't do that. So instead, we're trying to minimize that burden on the schools. Option two adds an additional school. It's Ashley Brunson, Kimberly Park, and Whittaker. It looks very similar. So option two, here's our current map. There's the new map. Basically, the only difference between these two, I'll, I'll do a back and forth between the two options here, is this area that is Thurmond Street, parallel to University Parkway, would instead be reassigned to Whittaker instead of Kimberly Park. There is more space at Whittaker than Kimberly Park, but it also does break up the Boston Thurmond area. So that's that part.
Lauren?
All right. Thank you, Frank. So we have done quite a bit of different opportunities for community outreach. Principal Hooker has been incredible with her and her staff in getting communication via email, via flyers, via texts, via phone calls to the families at Cook to make them aware of the discussions that we're having. We did a town hall community meeting at Paisley Middle School so that community members could come and ask questions of staff. We've also had a feedback survey that has been open since the beginning of our conversations, and then we published the maps after our last meeting with some additional requests for feedback. And that feedback remained open until yesterday, which is the reason you received the revised presentation today with an option selection by staff. Boston Thurmond Community held a town hall specifically in their community yesterday that they were able to provide community members that could not attend other meetings with some of the information that we've been presenting in these meetings as well. And so with that information and context, the request this evening is for the board to consider the approval of closing Cook Elementary, or excuse me, Cook Literacy Model in June of 2026. That's the conclusion of the current 25-26 school year. If the board elects to consider that recommendation, then the board would also need to proceed with making adjustments to the residential boundaries for those Cook Literacy Model students. It is staff's recommendation that the board adopt option one of the maps that Frank presented to you this evening. Frank is correct in that there is a significant number of students going to Kimberly Park in that option, but we do believe that that is the best option for the community rather than dispersing across four schools. And there will need to be some, some work to evaluate over the next year or two to support that school in making those adjustments. It is not the first time that we have schools that have a large enrollment compared to what they're used to holding. And the last recommendation from staff, should you consider the approval of the first two items, would be to vote this evening to consider surplusing the property. This is not the option to sell the property. It is to pursue the process of surplusing, which opens the door for staff to have some more official conversations out in the community and with other individuals to be able to determine what would be the best reutilization of that facility for the community and for the district as well. So if the board adopts those three decisions this evening, just to kind of do a timeline recap, we would be looking to notify staff and students and families at Cook Literacy Model by the end of this week with that decision and next steps, as well as with an FAQ, as kind of has been our standard practice with large decisions that we're making. The school would close June of 2026. Students would begin in their new school assignments in August, and in March, we would also be working with the staff members at Cook Elementary to prioritize the transfer process, similar to what we did with Virtual Academy as well, and give them first opportunity for those transfer selections. Now we'll turn it over to the board for discussion and questions.
And before I open it up for that, I just want to recognize, I believe we have some staff members of, of the Cook Literacy Model elementary schools. So if you all could stand, I would like to recognize you. Thank you for all you do. Yes, Board Member Miller.
I know we've touched on this before, but is Kimberly Park at capacity now? Like, I can't figure out how we're going to fit all these students into Kimberly Park.
So it is not 100% at capacity. They do have a, a strong pre-K program that does have some spaces there. And some of the classrooms, depending on the grade level, because we have class size restrictions, are not at full capacity. But there may be a year to two where you are pressing those class size limits, and there are class size waivers that are eligible. The board has approved those for some other sites in the last couple of years as well. And so it would take a year or two as fifth grade kind of exits and then fourth grade exits. There are about 79 students at Kimberly Park that are currently out of zone to that school right now.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, just to that point, we would have to manage, the, the board would have to manage transfers in. You just would not be able to do that. You'd really be looking at class sizes and that sort of thing. And if it is Kimberly Car, if Kimberly Park is currently a choice option, you really, you would have to manage whether or not you allow anybody in.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So as I, I kind of looked at, so first of all, I want to say that this board has not talked about or had the conversations about consolidation or closures when I feel like we probably needed to have had that conversation before now. I think that that's, it's probably because it's a, it's a tough conversation, and I think it's one that nobody wants to have. But our colleagues in different districts are having that conversation and, and preparing for our conversation tonight. I, I noticed that Guilford County Schools in the spring, or in the spring, I think, of this year, announced that they were going to be closing four schools. But the timeline for those closures was a little bit more spread out than kind of closing them within the one year. I think they were closing a total of four, and three of them were closing at the end of the 26-27 school year, and then one of them was closing at the end of the 27-28 school year. And so I guess the question I have is, is there, is there a specific need or desire or savings or like something that we, we attain by closing Cook at the end of this year? When I feel like all of the things regarding like the planning, the execution, making sure families understand what the boundaries are going to look like, all of those things, we can kind of take more time to help people familiarize themselves with if we move forward with the closure, but make it effective, not next year, but maybe the end of the, the next school year. So is, can, can you possibly provide some, you know, feedback about why we need to do this effective at the end of this coming school year? Or this current school year?
Ms. Rechers, I'll take that.
Sure.
Ultimately, that's a board call. Would have been nice to have that conversation before right now. But if, it's just, it's, there are savings, obviously, if you, if you close the school at the end of this year. Those expenses are on our books right now. They continue to be on our books next year. I think it's, we would make, make, need to make decisions about some pending facility modifications or updates that were going to be happening and delaying those and continue to sort of patch and fix things so that the school could continue to run for another year. But, but ultimately, the timing of when this happens, if the board determines that they want to wait longer, and, and I think you would want to be clear on, is the waiting longer not necessarily about efficiency or savings, but more about allowing time for transition? That's up to the board.
So, and I want to be clear, the reason why it just came to mind is because when I saw the, the slide specific about that Cook is slated, I, I feel like we talked about this before, that Cook is slated for a modernization or potential replacement within, as, as we contemplate the next bond, which potentially would go on the ballot in the fall of 2028. So that's why in my mind, I was like, well, at least let's talk about, I mean, like, again, I think it's, we can talk about it, although it might not be something that's feasible. I just want to see kind of what the, what the kind of thoughts were around that.
It, it's a, it's a board call ultimately. There are savings and, and, but it does give longer transition, so.
Board, my Board Member Watts?
So Brother, Board Member Bohannon, you're correct. This is a, a, a very challenging discussion. And I alluded to this earlier in other committee meetings, when you look at the historical significance of Cook Elementary School, the naming that's inside the building of Burke is inside the building, it's, there's a lot of history in that building that if we move to close it, I hope somewhere we can find a way to preserve the history of that building and make sure it stays within the Boston Thurmond community. My question is, you, you alluded to the fact that there are some conversations with the Boston Thurmond community. Can you give us a synopsis of what that was like? Are they, what are they saying about this potential closure?
Sure. So the Boston Thurmond, again, I want to be careful in speaking for them, but I do believe that they consider Kimberly Park to be their primary community school and that they invest a lot of time and energy and supports into. In 2019, I believe, the city of Winston-Salem adopted the official Boston Thurmond community boundaries. And so that is, that is also kind of the, the desire to kind of always think about how those line up with our own boundaries as well. And so the, I believe that the feedback was preserving and making sure that Kimberly Park has supports that they need as they receive new students. And I think any school that we were to send students to would be very welcoming. They always are as they transition. But the general feedback was, you know, it's always hard to close a school, but they desire that Kimberly Park would remain to be able to be their community school and not lose both.
Board Member Barr?
Board Member Watts asked my question, you know, what was the community's feelings and thoughts about it? So thank you.
Okay. Board Member Crowley?
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the staff, the students, and the volunteers that pour into Cook. It is an amazing, amazing school. And it's unfortunate that more people don't recognize that and said there are children to get educated there.
Any other, yes, Board Member Wood?
Question for either our superintendent or for you, Lauren. What, what would you envision the savings from the closure of Cook Elementary?
Yeah, I believe that's in the board agenda background or the finance section. So your, your annual cost avoidance would be your administrative salary costs and your operating costs, which is about 1.2 million. You would have a potential one-time return if the board were to end up selling that property. And if you were to use tax value, it's just over 2.8 million as a one-time return.
Second question, Adam Chair. And what would you envision the enrollment for Kimberly Park as a result of the closure?
Yes, so you would have about...
And the consolidation.
Absolutely. So there's 125 students in the Cook residential boundary that are impacted and will be kind of reassigned in that option one. And so you've got about, I'm going to, there's addresses that get assigned to a school, right? And then there's students at those addresses. So presently today, there's 156 addresses in option one that would be reallocated to Kimberly Park, but there are not 156 students. It would be around 78 to about 85, I believe it was. I don't have that specific number in front of me, but we can share that with the board. And so we, we can definitely get that to you. And you'll have, you'll have fifth graders exiting, and then you'll have new kindergartners coming in. So that enrollment will change, and that class size will change as well.
Yes, Board Member Watts?
So Lauren, also, when you look at the facility at Kimberly Park, and we're adding students and we're adding adults to the building, will there be enough space to accommodate everyone inside the building? And also, what about your parking at Kimberly Park at the top of the hill? And also on the side? Because right now, the parking is very tight right now for Kimberly Park as is. So we're adding more adults, will require more parking. Has anyone thought about how all that looks and then how we want to make sure we protect the limited amount of playground space that we currently have at Kimberly Park?
Yeah, so I know Kimberly Park has added some great playgrounds in the last year or two, and so that can always be an additional option, but those have created some great playing spaces for students. You are absolutely correct, parking there is tight. We talked in the last meeting at B&amp;G that the parking and the traffic flow at Cook is also tight. And so that's definitely a consideration that we need to look at. And so how you would stage those additional car riders if they were not bus riders. Hopefully, the students that are kind of in that Thurmond and Boston area at Cook that would move over to Kimberly Park would take advantage of the school bus transportation because it's right there for them. And then the staff that would follow the students is your teaching staff. And so, yes, there's going to be some class sizes that are a little bit larger than Kimberly's probably used to. We will have to, as Superintendent Moore said earlier, manage that each year. And one of the ways of doing that is not allowing out-of-zone transfers into that school when individuals ask for that if the school is at capacity.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon?
So another variable for me is sort of what happens to the building, you know, should we decide to proceed with the closure? So i, is there a, I know that obviously we want to engage the community, but is, is there, can we kind of think through, you know, what that process looks like so that we can make sure to engage the Boston Thurmond community regarding preserving the history of the building? You know, because I think that either way, there's a lot of rich history there. And so what I, what I wouldn't want is for it to, you know, us to close the school and then just remain there or sit there and then, you know, become dilapidated and, and us not have to, you know, have to...
Correct. Yes. And to, to that point, you know, the, the reason that staff is asking this evening that if you consider the first two votes, that you go ahead and pursue the surplus option, is because we really do want to be mindful of not vacating the facility and allowing it to sit there. We really want to be able to immediately begin conversations about reutilization. Some of the feedback we heard in the community meetings was the community needing more daycare options and more rec options for students. And so that could be an avenue that we try to help pursue. Preserving the name Cook and Burke are very important to the community, and we do have some options through the sale process to be able to require that to happen. And some of the ways that we can also work to preserve history, and I would love to hear information from the community as well, because I'm sure they have several more ideas than I do. But when we rebuilt Paisley across the street on Thurmond, they actually did brick giveaway to community members to be able to keep a piece of the original Paisley where they attended school several years ago. And so there's several options that we can pursue and uplift to preserve the building in the, in the future.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Catty Moore, interim superintendent, will give us a budget update.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I have, has been the custom, I'm starting with the 2425 budget debt and including the repayment options today. The DPI total due, and I'm, I'm just going back a little bit, the total originally due was 11.3 million dollars. We made a payment, I believe it was in August, of 7.925 million dollars, which that debt then came down to 3.4 million dollars. The three big vendor payments due, you see there, the substitute management system for South County, for SROs and nurses and SSC custodial services, that vendor total is 15.377. In terms of the DPI payment, the DPI 3.4 million was paid in full this morning. You may, you are probably aware that the Winston-Salem Foundation established the WSFCS Futures Fund to support private fundraising efforts to reduce the district's debt. The foundation contributed $500,000 to seed the fund and the Futures Fund also received the 400,000 committed by the Twin City Development Foundation. They came and presented at our last board meeting on October 14th. So the full and final payment of that DPI debt came from the community donations made to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Futures Fund. That, I mean, that's just an amazing effort. And I, I witnessed the check being handed off to the person at DPI because, you know, it wasn't the, that happened at the foundation, not here. But I went there this morning to make sure that I could be, be a part of that. It's just an amazing contribution. And the Futures Fund is continuing to raise funds. They want to go beyond this amount. I think at a minimum, they're looking at 5 million to make sure that the entire county debt is repaired. I'll talk, replace, I'll talk about the debt in just a minute. And even beyond that for, because this fund is specifically for debt repayment. It took a long time to get there. So, speaking of the county, the county, Forsyth County Commissioners did adopt a resolution to match the reduction of the Winston, of our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools debt to them equal to funds raised by the Futures Fund. So the 3.4 million you see here will now be reduced to 1.6 million when they match that reduction from the contribution from the Futures Fund. So that vendor total now drops to, at this point, 11.9 million dollars. I do have an asterisk there. Should the board approve the SSC contract with the full debt amortized, that would reduce the total debt to 7.7 million. Couple of words about debt repayment overview. The target that I've been working towards is 2.4 to the 3.5 million for debt repayment during this school year, the remainder of this school year, to target 2.4 to 3.5 for '25, '26. We are scheduled to present a debt repayment plan to the State Board of Education Business Operation Committee on November 4th. As I have said previously, for debt repayment, we have two options. We either received increased, we receive increased revenue, which is what the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Futures Fund has done, or we decrease expenses and repurpose existing funds. We've done a lot of that as well. Increased revenue could be a direct appropriation from the legislature or the county where no repayment is required. Or the increased revenue could be a loan from the legislature or an advance from the county where repayment is required. Obviously, options that you have to repay are not preferred because you still have to continue that repayment plan or find weight, or find reductions in order to do that. The four repayment options that I've talked about a couple of times now, aligning existing budget expenditures, maximizing state and federal allocations, which uses existing budget funds, repurposing non-personnel expenses to free up local funds. I have removed personnel from there since we are not considering additional personnel reductions, reducing other local expenses such as salary supplements, classified longevity, or expanding furloughs, or taking additional loans from the Child Nutrition Fund balance. The board approved 6 million to be borrowed from Child Nutrition. We have borrowed two. There's 4 million available, but again, that would come with additional interest and that sort of stuff as well. So I'm providing the superintendent's recommendation, which currently is embedded within the budget resolution that you are considering this evening. Establish a 3.5 million dollar budget for debt repayment for the remainder of the year, available from within existing budgeted and available funds. We have made a lot of reductions in both personnel and non-personnel in the last few months. Through, through the reductions that we have made and through the really careful budgeting and partnership with Hill in how we are maximizing our allotments, they are comfortable that we can have 3.5 million within our existing budget funds available for debt repayment this year. I'm also setting aside a budgeted reserve of 2.1 million. I've messaged that earlier as 2.3, but in looking at the numbers more closely, it's 2.1 that will be available. This largely represents unreleased funds to schools in anticipation of the successful AllInForOurSchools.org campaign. They're looking to raise about 3 million dollars. They're more than 50% of the way there towards that goal. And so I am comfortable in setting aside a budgeted reserve of 2.1 million here from those funds as well as some custodial supplies that, that we would no longer be responsible for should the SSE contract pass. That budgeted reserve could support the potential need for EC contract supplier expenditures. We are always receiving additional students that come to the district that have high needs and contracts that may need to be expanded. So having a budgeted reserve is something, normally we would have fund balance, though we don't have fund balance. So we, we're creating a budgeted reserve for this. We've also talked about the need for funds for summer employment. Really, we're talking about the month of June here for select school staff, athletic directors, assistant principals and counselors, at least for every high school, all the A.D.s, one assistant principal and one counselor for the month of June, further if we have additional funds and can support it. And then I would say to you that if you want those reductions, those additions to be permanent in your March-April timeframe, when you request your budget of the commissioners, you would ensure that the full budget for these needs would be either requested or available within your budget. We can also add the cost of the State Board of Education and the local government commission contract, that's $97,770, I'll talk about that in just a minute. That is what we would use the budgeted, the unbudgeted reserve for, the budgeted unbudgeted reserve. The repayment and reserve budgets, as I said, are included in the '25, '26 final budget. And it is, that resolution is on the agenda for approval this evening. As a reminder, the Child Nutrition Loan, 2 million dollars, is due to be paid by June 30th, 2026, and it is accruing interest monthly at about 7,000 dollars per month. So when we think about that 425 to 500K per month debt payment, we would likely want to look at not just vendor payment, but the Child Nutrition Loan as well, because it is now accruing interest. I wanted to translate a little bit what Tyler said earlier at the beginning of the presentation. I don't speak auditor. I followed what he said because he said it to me about 10 times. So I want to, I want to refer a little bit now to our auditor's report and some of the takeaways from it that I want to make sure that we all have. On slide nine of their report, they reported revenues over and under expenditures. The general local negative balance was 43 million. The capital outlay negative balance was 3.3. The special revenue was to the good 1.8. I'll talk about that deceptive number in just a minute. So you will note that we have repeatedly messaged 46 to 48, maybe as high as 50 million dollars. This number is that number. It is 46.8. Is that right? Yeah, 46.8 million dollars. That was our over expenditures for last year. In slide nine, special revenue is like grants and that sort of thing when we talk about grants. In slide nine, he also has end of year, that's right below the revenues explanation. So the general local is showing a deficit of 30 million. Why is it 30 million and not 43? Because it is reduced by the application of the 12.7 million dollars in fund balance that was reported for last year's financial statement audit. So last year's financial statement audit, which we didn't get until March, I think it was March, reported that we had 12.7 million in fund balance. So that 12.7 million in fund balance is no longer there. It's applied towards that debt, which reduces the 43 million to the 30 million that you see here. The capital outlay had an application of 814,000 in fund balance. So that negative fund balance, as opposed to being 3.3, is 2.5. And you'll see special revenue, where it was a plus before is now a negative. The reason it is overall a negative is because they had a negative fund balance from actually two prior years applied. So while last year, we were to the positive in the special revenue, the prior two years, we were to the negative, such that right now, once you add all of that up together, math is cumulative, we are still to the negative 120,000 dollars. So the negative fund balance, once you add all of those together, is 33 million dollars. Couple of notes. That negative 33 million dollars reflects June 30th, 2025 data. It does not reflect the payment of 7.9 made to DPI in August. It does not reflect the 3.4 made to DPI today. It does reflect vendor debt still owed to ESS, SSC and the county. So the reduction in the county debt of 3.4 million is not reflected either. Payments that are made in '25, '26 for debt from '24, '25 in accounting are termed a subsequent event. So when we get our audit, there will be subsequent events listed in there. Don't know if they'll list them this year or if they'll list them the following year. But all of those payments that we have made this year, the 7.95, the 3.4, the rest, the entire 11.3 to DPI, the 3.4 match of the county, those numbers will come off of that 33,569. So you can take that 33,569, reduce by 7.95, reduce by 3.409, reduce by another 3.409 for the county, and should the SSE contract be approved tonight, reduce by an additional 4.2. That's all I have to say about '24, '25.
Quick question.
Sure.
Do we get to actually subtract the SSC if it's embedded into the 10-year payment? 10-year contract?
I think you do because it is a, it's like a signing bonus and then it's amortized over the next 10 years. But I'll confirm. So budget development for '26, '27, I've said most of these things already. We do need to, and we know that there are fundraising efforts that continue now and will potentially continue to impact our vendor debt and the county debt. But unless we've paid everyone off by next March, we need to continue to contemplate debt repayment into '26, '27 and beyond. The 3.5 million that we've identified in the budget for debt repayment this year, they are recurring funds, so they are available for future years should you need to continue debt repayment and just use that 3.5 every year. There may be additional staffing reductions that the, the board and staff will want to contemplate for '26, '27, either if you need additional funds for debt repayment or if you want to balance the budget. Or actually, and I talked about this a little bit in Finance Committee, should there be a budget priority that rises to the top of the list of reinstating or creating something that we need additional funds for? Is that something that you want to look at through getting additional revenue, like a county appropriation? Or do you restructure your existing resources in order to make space for that? We will always continue to look at non-personnel reductions. There's not a lot left in non-personnel, but we will look at those and see where we land. And then the last bullet I've talked about also, through the budget development process with the commissioners, should they, should the formula or the negotiations lead to an additional appropriation of 6 million or so in, in increase to our local appropriation next year? We would take that 6 million dollars and first, we should take off the top anything that we don't have a choice about that's going to be an increased cost, like if utilities are going up or if our retirement rate contribution has to go up or if health insurance goes up, the portion that we, the district pay. We would, let's say the total cost of those things is 2 million dollars and the commissioners were giving us an additional 6, we would take 2 million off and that would leave an additional 4 million for either new programming or debt repayment, if that's what we wanted to prioritize it for. So there, there are options moving forward. It is time to start getting feedback on the '26, '27 budget priorities. So during the month of November, we're going to begin sessions to discuss and collect feedback on budget priorities, starting with the principals on November 10th. In December, the assistant principals will go through that, a similar protocol to establish and discuss budget priorities. We've got teacher advisory council, classified advisory council, parent advisory council, student advisory council and a host of other options that will be available to get feedback on the budget priorities for the next year. And I didn't put board in here, but the board as well. We've, I've also been asked for an update on the IRS withholding update. The state board will be asking for this update as well, so I'll give you the good news, bad news here too. So we became aware in June of 2025 that there were some concerns about withholding payments being made on time and possible penalties or interest or fees that were due to the IRS. Over the next two months, from June, we determined that funds were sent to the IRS as required. There was a number posted incorrectly on one of the quarterly forms and it resulted in the IRS thinking that we had not paid correctly. Those payments were correct. The number was transposed on one of the forms that we, that we sent in. And I don't, I don't know if they transposed it or we transposed it, but there was a transposed number. Payments for the month of July 2024 and August 2024 were late. They did incur fees and penalties that were sent in separate notices. So the payments were made, but in July and August, they were made late of 2024. We also determined that in some cases, I've mentioned this before, there is a required report that goes with the funds. And that required report that accompanies the quarterly filing Schedule B was not logged as received by the IRS. We have copies of what we sent. Those copies include the money data and right behind it, the Schedule B. The IRS does not allow you to staple things to keep them separate. So when we sent that information in, we don't know what happened, but they reported that they didn't have some of our Schedule Bs, so we've been busy resending them Schedule Bs. We've been in contact with the IRS since June 2025 to reconcile the timing of the payments, submitting corrected forms, receipt of the required Schedule B documents, making sure that they have everything. At this time, just a few weeks ago, they, one of the previous penalties of 400,000 dollars was removed because they realized that we had paid on time and everything that they needed was there. That kind of collaboration and negotiation continues. I would say that our efforts have been hampered by transitions of staff and leadership in payroll. You've heard this refrain before. The two folks that are primarily responsible for this over the last few years are no longer in the payroll and finance office and there are two new folks that are doing this. Well, one's not really new, one's a retiree back in place. Couple of additional notes here. We did receive a notice the last week or so from the IRS concerning a late payment for federal withholding in 2025. We discovered that amounts were also due for reconciling for North Carolina withholding for first and second quarter, sorry about the misspelled word there, of 2025. Those amounts, they have been paid and for the North Carolina. We will probably receive a penalty letter from North Carolina sometime soon. So to delineate what these are, for the first quarter of 2025, the quarterly report showed an underpayment of 27,801.24. However, we had overpaid $27,213 in the fourth quarter of 2024. Normally, they would use the overpayment to offset the underpayment, and there would be no issue. However, we think because of the transition of the years from '24 to '25, for some reason, maybe they didn't do this. So they actually used the overpayment to cover the underpayment that they think occurred in 2021 that didn't occur in 20, y'all can't make this stuff up. Okay? That they, I mean, it's just very complicated and very detailed. I mean, that's how, that's how this is. So, so since they used the overpayment that went to them for the underpayment that didn't occur, they now show the underpayment and have assessed a penalty. This is why you contact them, you cross all your i's, you, no, you dot all your i's, you cross all your t's, and you make sure that they have every single piece of paper in order, in order to try to get this all reconciled. For North Carolina, the North Carolina amounts, for the first quarter, we had a late payment of 26,57, and that was reconciling the amount paid versus the amount due. We, and then the same thing happened for the second quarter of 2025. We had a late payment of $1,080 in North Carolina withholding, again, due to reconciling the amount paid versus the amount due. That amount has been paid as well. So I will just say again that we are up to date on our payments to the IRS. Okay? We are still responding to requests to resubmit forms so we can finalize which penalties or fines are actually due and what can be appealed or reduced. We don't have an answer to that last bullet yet completely, so that, that work is ongoing. And I will say that for the late payments in first and second quarter of 2025, those staff are no longer there either. So that's, that's the update there. Couple of things on accountability. So yesterday, the State Board of Education did meet, and they voted to engage Malden and Jenkins LLC as the firm to review the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' internal controls. You will recall that this is the review that was requested by the state auditor. And so the state board took action on that yesterday to select the firm that will do that review. This engagement is complementary to the work of our independent auditor, Forest Mazars. It does not duplicate the work that the Office of the State Auditor has already done, the report that they released on August 14th this past year. This review will evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of our current controls, including any new controls, policies, and procedures implemented since the deficit was uncovered. I think what's important here is that this review is not looking 10 years back. We believe we know what's happened in the last 10 years. What we, what this review will do is tell us, have the changes we've made, have the processes we've implemented, will they support the level of transparency and accountability and fiscal responsibility that is necessary as we climb out of this fiscal crisis and move forward? And I welcome that review and those findings. The engagement itself is authorized under general statute. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction issued a request for the quote and does so on behalf of the State Board of Education and the Local Government Commission. So these are all the partners that worked to get this done. And then NCDPI, acting on behalf of the state board, will serve as the lead oversight body, providing guidance and direction throughout the review process. Because we, as the district, are the primary beneficiary of this review, the review findings will be used to inform future financial management and governance practices. The cost of the engagement, I mentioned this earlier, is $97,770. We are responsible for this cost, and that is in the general statute. It's like the very last statement. The engagement contract indicates a completion date of December 31st, 2025, and a public report is due by February 15th, 2026. As I mentioned earlier, the cost of the engagement at just under $100,000 can be paid for out of the unbudgeted reserve that is in the budget resolution that we are seeking board approval for this evening. So just as a recap, in terms of budget, what we are asking the board to consider this evening. Approval of the new contract with SSC, considering approval of the '25, '26 budget resolution, and immediately after that, the board would consider approval of the '25, '26 salary schedules. The salary schedules always come after you do the budget resolution. Not a lot of movement on the salary schedules this year. The step increase really is all for certified staff. Everything else is pretty much held status quo. Happy to answer questions.
So before we start with the questions, I just want to have, give a heartfelt thanks to the foundations and all the community members who came together with their generosity to help our district and to help our community. And we're also incredibly grateful to those individuals whose tireless efforts helped to make this happen, and for their continued efforts moving forward to help us, our district, get back to good fiscal health. So I just want to give another shout out. Thank you. So yes, Board Member Watts.
This is for Superintendent Moore. We said a lot of numbers there, where we're increased, decreased, to final, can we get maybe like a one-page summary that we can give to the public saying that DPI debt paid, this debt paid, so we can all be on the same page of what it currently looks like?
Yeah.
Because we went through a lot of numbers.
We did.
And I want to make sure that all in the public have an understanding of what happened, what's happened over the last two weeks, and where we're really staying with the bottom line.
Yeah, media in the back has thumbs up there. So, so yeah, we can do that. I, I will do it, I will also do that November 10th. I know they don't want to, they don't want to wait based, because we've got stuff right now, but on November 10th, I want to give sort of a state of the state with regards to where we are, because that'll be the last board meeting that I'm with you. So.
Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
So the, so if we realize the, the, if the money, the private money that's raised exceeds the 5 million, then that means that the counties, what we owe the county is erased, and then also now we've paid off the state, so what we have left over would be paid to our other vendor, which is ESS.
So if the entire 5 million county debt is, is retired, that means that the private funders have raised over 5 million. That would mean that you'd have 1.6 million available towards, the only other vendor that's left is ESS and/or child nutrition.
And that's, that assumes that we make the changes to the custodial contract?
That would be in us, in us, yeah, that would be only if SSC contract is approved. If it is not approved, then when we spread out that 400,000 to 500,000 a month, we would contemplate ESS, SSC, and child nutrition. Just, there'd be more vendors that would need, that amount of money would need to be applied for, because the, the amount of debt repayment funds available is not going up.
And so if, if there's a balance, so I think we owe ESS, what was it, 6.7?
6.1.
6.1 now. So whatever the balance that's left over after-
4.5.
The 4.5, which is after the 1.6 is applied?
Mm-hmm.
So then-
Done these numbers.
We can either use the 3.5 that you've identified from now to the remainder of the year to pay that, which would leave 1 million left.
Correct.
And we can contemplate that amount, like we can identify through the budget process a way to pay that amount either via the budget process next year or some-
Those are really good best-case scenarios, yes.
Right.
Optimistic scenarios. They are, they are possible, though. They are quite possible, which I don't think I would have said three months ago. And so, so yes, those scenarios are possible.
Okay.
Any other? Yes, Board Member Crowley?
I just have a comment. I think we'd be remiss not to recognize Ms. Moore and Board Chair Kaplan for their efforts, truly tireless efforts to rally the community for our cause. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take no credit other than being willing to tell the story.
Madam Chair, I want to add also to our finance people who are here tonight, and those who have been working behind the scenes, some came out of retirement to support us and to do the work, and I, we cannot say enough, and many of you were here when I was involved, but I'm glad you're still here, glad you came back, and you are supporting our district in this crisis. I also want to say thank you to the many hours you all have also spent behind the scenes to support these numbers and these transactions and transitions. So thank you to the finance staff as well.
Thank you. Yes, I have worn out the carpet down there. Every day, multiple times, I get my exercise up and down the steps.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the budget resolution.
Yep, that's fine. So Hill is not able to join us in person, but I did ask them if they could join us virtually, so they could be online in case questions come up or anything that they might want to be able to answer or chime in on, correct me. Hey, folks, we can see you.
Join us virtually, so they could be online in case questions come up or anything that they might want to be able to answer or chime in on, correct me.
Yeah. So, Hill, folks, the meeting has a 10-second delay. Stop streaming.
Join us virtually, so they could be online. I want to be able to answer or chime in on, correct me. Yeah. So, Hill, folks, the meeting has a 10-second delay. Stop streaming. Join us virtually, so they could be online.
Should they just turn the volume down?
I want to be able to answer or chime in on-
Or mute.
-correct me. The, the meeting has a 10-second delay. Stop streaming. Join us virtually, so they could be online. Should they just turn the volume down? Or mute?
Can you still hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yay. Okay. So, yeah, can you just, can you stick him in a corner? Okay. All right. This is the budget resolution for '25, '26. Purpose of a budget resolution, again, I feel like I'm teaching all over again. So the purpose of a North Carolina local government budget resolution is to establish a spending and revenue blueprint for the upcoming fiscal year, sets legal limits on what the public school unit can collect and spend. It acts as a financial plan that includes all the estimated revenues and anticipated expenses. The budget resolution creates a, creates legally binding limits on spending and must be adopted before the fiscal year can begin operations. As a reminder, you adopted an interim budget resolution at the end of June so that we could keep operating as of July 1. And this is now the updated final budget resolution, once we've gotten allotments from the state and the federal has start coming in and so forth and so on. The budget resolution itself provides a financial roadmap. It's a plan for both estimated revenues and proposed expenditures for the fiscal period, for the '25, '26 school year. It does set legal limits. It establishes enforceable legal limits on spending and revenue. The PSU cannot change appropriations without specific legal authorization from the Board of Education. That is why we bring you the budget amendments and transfers, and why we must stay within the budgets that are released and not add to them or subtract from them without the appropriate paper trail, paperwork, and permissions. The resolution authorizes spending and projects. The final budget resolution authorizes the expenditures and the specific purposes and projects that are included, daily operations and large capital investments. The budget is designed to ensure fiscal responsibility. We are required to create and maintain a balanced budget. When you look at our balanced budget in terms of what it's made up of this year, the local current expense is about $180 million, it is 26%. The largest portion of our funds are state funds, 377 million at 53%. Federal grants is 24 million at 3%. The other restricted fund, which includes stuff that we talked about earlier today, like the ROTC payments, the sales tax, when it comes in, in the spring, the Medicaid, Medicare reimbursements, those kinds of things, is 12.7 million. And, and that is, that other restricted fund is a projected, these are projected revenues. The capital outlay fund, 75 million, that's 11% of our budget, and the child nutrition fund is 36 million, that is 5% of our budget. So you see there all of the components of the revenues that make up our budget. In looking at the numbers a little bit more specifically, in this budget, you'll see the local current expense, you see the same numbers that you saw on the page before in the pie, but now you see them broken out into categories here. So the same categories, same amounts. The local expense contemplates salaries at 82 million. I have to tell you, that number is far lower than it was last year by about $30 million, which is to be expected. That's where the reductions have been. But, and the supplies and materials are also far lower as well than what we've had in previous years as well. So you see there salaries and benefits, it's about $125 million. Most of our local budget is people. State public school fund, you see, again, most of that budget is salaries and benefits. Federal grants, again, mostly salaries and benefits. The other restricted fund, it makes sense here that it is not as much salaries and benefits and more other things like contracts and services, supplies and materials. Capital outlay fund, you see there, child nutrition fund, you see there. Child nutrition is, we report on it, it is, that is a, an enterprise, so the funds that they make pay the salaries and their expenses. So in order for child nutrition to operate at a $36 million revenue, they have to have $36 million of revenue in order to meet their expenses that they project. If they were to make less money than this, we would need to kick in some with local in order because they can't run a deficit. So it's important that we budget properly for child nutrition. And you see the total amounts there on the side. Our budget for this year, $707 million. Revenue has to equal expense when we budget. However, revenues and budgets will continue to change through the fiscal year. You will see budget amendments and transfers as DPI releases more funds. We have not had all our federal funds released, so I know that we will see budget amendments there. And then transfers, if we find that we need to move funds from one area to another area based on where expenses are coming in, you see those transfers as well. You're seeing those, I think, twice a month now. I think, I actually went back and read some of your audits from previous years. One of the recommendations was that you do budget amendments and transfers more than once a month, and you're now doing them twice a month. Monthly reconciliations will continue to happen to ensure that budgets remain balanced. So as, as has been stated earlier, we need to continue to do that every month. Can you move it? Oh, wait, it went. Okay. That's okay. Trying to move him to the right corner. Okay. So the local fund expense overview, again, here you see revenues. So, the local fund expense overview, again, here you see revenues. Remember that $180 million includes the $8.5 million in local flexibility that we got from the county earlier this year that we used to pay DPI and the portion that goes to charters. So it's really more like 172 because the other funds, the $8.5, they were like pass-through funds. They were funds that came through to us, but they weren't really for us because it went straight to DPI. So in our overall budget for local, you see salaries and benefits, purchase services, that includes the portion of utilities and some other contracts that we have here, supplies and materials. This does include funds that go both to schools and to central services. And you see the amount there that I talked about earlier in the Finance Committee meeting. We have upped the projection and the budgeted amount for charter schools to try to ensure that we do not come in under. Last year, we budgeted around 12. We ended up closer to 13, so we were over budget in charter school payments. So this year, we've budgeted $15 million for charter schools, and the 643 there is, you see the portion of the $8.5 in the first column that is due to charters from that county flexibility we got in August. So our charter school budget this year is at $15.6 million. We will continue to work with Hill while they are here to make sure that we are maximizing our positions, getting all of the savings that we can, most expensive people on state, et cetera. A couple of specific items about what's in the local expense fund overview. So teacher subpay and benefits has been budgeted at $7.5 million. You will recall that our contract with ESS was for $12 million. We really felt that we could do this for a lot less ourselves in-house. That is what we have budgeted for this year. You recall, I said earlier, that we went ahead and budgeted some in local for potential local overages in transportation. So we've budgeted $2 million there in case it needs to be there and available for local transportation costs. This is really due to the fact that we were about $5 million over. We had to pay $5 million in local last year for transportation. We anticipate $3.5 million or so potentially in reduced costs with eliminating choice transportation, but you know, that's a, that was an estimate. So we do need to have a budgeted reserve for local transportation. A couple, the retirement salary adjustment, it was an adjustment that we had to make at $313,000. That is for the pension law. So you will recall that the pension law, underfunded pension, when someone retires, sometimes the district gets a bill for that person's retirement for a formula that somebody created somewhere that believes that their pension might be underfunded by. Usually, it is people who are at the higher ends of the salary scale who have moved through the district from like teacher to principal to central office, and if their salaries have gone up over the years, but they spent a large portion of their years at a lower pay rate, but in the later years, they're at a higher pay rate, there's a pension underfunded liability that is applied. So it is good to reserve dollars in our budget for those potential bills that will come in. The next three items are items that are contemplated being funded by All In For Our Schools, which is part of the funds where we will create that unbudgeted reserve of $2.1 million. $917 is the amount that's not been released to schools for supplies. $458 is the amount that's not been released to schools for their printer, their print copies, and $350 is the amount that's not been released to schools for custodial. We are also putting a facilities reserve in of $1 million because those budgets are really tight as well, and we spent some of the capital fund balance last year in areas that were not capital. We are creating a reserve of $1 million just to make sure that they are prepared for any needs that may come up. And then the reserved expense for debt repayment, you see, you know, I've targeted 3.5. It is at 3.8 is what's being built into the budget. The excess beyond the 3.5, I'm adding to the unbudgeted reserve that will be the instructional supply allotment, the Toshiba allotment, the custodial allotment. That's why you get 2.1 there. Some areas of concern that we may want to look at as we're looking at this unbudgeted reserve and things that may come in over the course of the year different than what we've projected, the exceptional children-related services, I've already mentioned that. We have some pre-K work that we need to do in the district around how our pre-Ks are budgeted and whether or not there are sufficient local funds and the number of classrooms that we have. There's just a number of things that need to be worked on there. We also need to work on our school that has a paid pre-K program that has provided that service to this community for many years. I think they started in 1999, and they were charging families $600 a month for pre-K in 1999, and they are still charging $600 a month. That needs to change, folks. And then, of course, 24-25 debt repayment that will continue into this year and potentially beyond, and Cobra insurance costs. We never know what, you know, how, whether or not we have enough budgeted there. So those are, those are all areas that we might need to look at in our budget and pay attention to and monitor as we go through the course of the year. Now we're moving to the State Public School Fund. The revenue here, again, from the first page, $377 million. We have 248 and then another 114 budgeted in salaries and benefits. And you see there, purchase services, supplies and materials, and capital outlay. Again, we will continue to work with Hill to make sure that we maximize our state dollars. Federal Grants Fund Overview. These are our grants, and these are the amounts that we are budgeting for our grants. That total amount is $24 million. Not all grant funds are in, so we will continue to see budget amendments during the course of the year for additional federal funds as they are released. And you see, again, the vast majority of these dollars are in salaries and benefits. The Other Restricted Fund Overview. Talked a little bit about this one in the Finance Committee as well. This is the one that has Medicaid reimbursement and fee for service. It has the ROTC reimbursements in it. It has the sales tax whenever we apply for it. So in here, we have budgeted conservatively in some areas. So we've budgeted for indirect costs at $2 million. We want to budget the revenues conservatively to make sure that we also budget our expenditures properly and that we have what we need. So you see the different kinds of revenues, grant revenues. Fund 8 here is at $12 million. And again, not as much in salary and benefits, more in purchase services and supplies and materials. This is published with tonight's materials. This is the presentation that went with the budget resolution. It's about six or eight pages long that you have as an attachment, and it also reflects the information that is in the skinny budget book that we created for you. Normally, you would get a budget book in the spring. You did not get a budget book this past spring, so we created one with a little bit more detailed information than what you have in either the PowerPoint or the budget resolution so that you can refer to it if you would like. Happy to answer questions.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
I'm just very lay-oriented, so my question deals with indirectly, how's the state not passing a current budget impact what you just said tonight?
So, the state passed a mini-budget bill. Can't remember when it was, but sometime this summer, they passed a mini-budget bill. That mini-budget bill did include some appropriations for education. It was in that mini-budget bill where they established that the teachers, certified teachers, would receive that step increase. So we knew that the step increase was going to happen because it was in the mini-budget bill. There were a lot of things that were not in the mini-budget bill. So sometime in August, I believe it was, our state superintendent sent a letter to the legislature, Superintendent Mo Green, sent a letter to the legislators to say, in absence of a state budget, he was going to operate under the status of a continuation budget, meaning, and that is what our legislature does. When they don't adopt a budget, they're actually going on a continuation budget, which means that only things that were funded in the prior year continue to be funded. So Superintendent Green applied the continuation budget lens to state public school funding. If it was funded the prior year, it would be funded in this year unless there is legislation to the contrary. So we are budgeting, and they have released funds based on that continuation budget model.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I can't believe we didn't need y'all for nothing. So...
Thank you all for being on virtual.
All right. I think we can say bye to you guys now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yes. So we are getting close to 10:00 PM, and usually that is the time when we adjourn our meeting, but we will waive that. We are getting close to the end. Of course, we do have to go back into closed and back into open for a second, but we'll waive that. We're going to move on to Consent Agenda. We took off Consent Agenda E until we resume back into our open session. So we have a slate of six items to consider tonight. Consider approval of the Contract with Education Resource Group for Reynolds High School. Next, consider approval of the '25-'26 Title I Continuous Comprehensive Improvement Plan briefed at the October 14, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Next, consider approval of Policy 6161, Acceptable Use of Technology. This was briefed at the October 14, 2025 Policy Committee. Next, consider approval of the 2026-2027 New Course Request briefed at the October 28, 2025 Curriculum Committee meeting, and consider approval of the September 23, 2025 Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the slate of Consent Agenda items?
So moved.
So I have a motion. All in favor. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to our action items. Consider approval of the Contract Addendum for a 10-year annual renewal agreement with SSC for custodial services. Do I have a motion?
Board Chair, I have something I want to ask right quick.
Yes.
And I failed to do this when we were talking about it. My concern...
Do you want to wait until we get to the discussion part of it?
Okay.
Is it about this?
Okay.
So do we have a motion? So we have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second by Board Member Watts. Now we're open to discussion. Please, yes.
My question came, when I looked at several, when we listed all the properties, and like if we approved Cook tonight, then that would be removed from one of the properties for the contract. But there were several other ones that I looked at on here, like Main Street Academy, that were not the leasing part. So that was a part of all of the, how would that affect that contract? Because there's several of them on there.
So, good question.
Yeah, so it would only be for the properties. I can double-check that address. That may just be a typo. But for Cook, as an example, if you all were to proceed with the vote this evening on Cook, then that contract amount would change. And so anytime that occurs, we would come back to you with an addendum to that exhibit because that would change. You wouldn't have those services anymore.
So it would reduce it.
Correct. It would reduce it.
That's a good question.
Yep.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So within the contract, there's a provision that talks about the district and the contractor coming together on that final list of which the amount of custodians will retain and finalizing that, I think, by December 1st.
Yep.
Kit, is it possible, can you commit to keeping the board updated, not necessarily about names, but like how many it ended up being based on things like retirements or attrition or things like that?
Sure, like a staffing update of what's taking place with the employee grouping?
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
We can probably do that on a bi-weekly basis, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? So we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to one. Next, consider approval of the Reduction in Force for Custodial Services Personnel to Implement the Transition to SCC. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley. I have a second by Board Member Miller. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to one. Next, consider approval of the Cook Literacy Model Elementary School closure. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Watts. I have a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion?
Again, discussion, I just want to make sure on the record that we will say that if we're going to close this school, that we make sure we do all we can to preserve the history of the building and also to preserve the true community that Boston Thurman has currently with Cook Elementary School.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we have a motion. We have a second. We've had some discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to one. Next, consider approval of the new residential boundary maps for Cook Literacy Model Elementary School Residential Zone. Do I have a motion? So I believe it's for one. Yes, one.
Move to approve. Option one.
So move to approve by Board Member Crowley. Do I have a second? Second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven to one. Next, consider approval to surplus the Cook Literacy Model property. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Believe that motion carries unanimously. Next, consider approval of the budget resolution. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion?
Just one quick thing. So Madam Superintendent, in the event that the state passes a budget and there are adjustments that need to be made relative to staffing or salaries, how do we go about making those adjustments? We have to, do we, do we get the money going back to the beginning of the fiscal year?
So, so yes, if raises are passed in a budget later in the year, the money is retroactive to the beginning of the year, but there is a local impact, and those funds are not in the budget. So, you know, you have to look at your unbudgeted reserve, other transfers. This is an occasion where you could possibly go to your commissioners, you know, for something, an unexpected event that happens in the middle of the year because your, if your budget cannot support it, and then you would need to obviously build that into your next year's budget in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and we have a second. We've had discussion. All in favor? Thank you. That passes unanimously. And last, consider approval of the fiscal year 2026 salary schedules. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That also passes unanimously. November 11, 2025 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Oh, November 10, excuse me. Before we begin our public comments, let me say to our cable viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast. This will conclude our broadcast.